Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the meeting today and ask our clerk to do the roll call.
Happy to. President Melina Raymond.
Here.
Vice President Angie Taylor. Jackie Calvert. Is she's here?
Here.
I'm here. Katie Simon-Holland. Scott Kelly. Ellen Minetto. And Student Trustee Noble will not be here. Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you very much. Move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite Mr. Kevin Dick to lead us in the pledge today.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our action to adopt the agenda, I do want to make a few notes that we will be moving a few things around in today's agenda, or I'd like to request that we do. So, looking to move Agenda Item 5.01, the Superintendent Job Description after our general public comment period, and then we'll go to general public, or excuse me, from there on to the regular agenda 5.02, and then I'd like to then request that we move Agenda Item 5.08, our presentation with the Washoe County Health Department, up after Agenda Item 5.02, since we do have some guests here that have other things to get on to after today's meeting. So, we'd again be moving Agenda Item 5.01, the Superintendent Job Description after Agenda Item 3, the public comment, apologize, then we would move on to Agenda Item 4.01, the legislative update, then on to Agenda Item 5.02, and then 5.08, the presentation with the Washoe County Health Department, and then back on to the schedule.
So moved.
Thank you. Looking for a second after, so we've got a motion from Katie Simon-Holland, a second from Vice President Dr. Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda, looking to see if anyone has anything they would like to remove from the agenda, or have any questions on. If not, looking to approve the consent agenda item. Oh, sorry, we do have public comments, so we'll take that.
Margaret Martini.
Hi, Margaret Martini. I'd like to comment on 2.07. Some of us are hoping this board intervenes and says no to Naviance and the Incline High School boosters, for once again bullying control of our high schools through the use of money. If you're not willing to stand up to the boosters, at least make this be an opt-in program only after parents are educated on all aspects of Naviance. Boosters bought Naviance for the new counselors. Naviance is an online counselor. Per boosters meeting, the way they want to use Naviance would require student data from Infinite Campus be shared with Naviance. Remember, most of the data in Infinite Campus is hidden from parents and stored forever. Since Naviance was not a district-approved vendor, the boosters had to go to the district and seek approval. This must be because the boosters donate so much money to Incline High School that they get what they want. For several years, there's been only one counselor at the high school for approximately 300 students. We still have about 300 students, but now we have two counselors. Unless I am missing something, Naviance is a solution to a problem that we don't have. At a recent boosters meeting, some questions were asked, and the answers indicated that the members were clueless about how data would be shared, and if parents could effectively opt out. Here is a part of a quote of Seattle Schools Community Forum from SP. "The amount of psychological profiling data that the company will get on thousands of individual students through this module is dangerous from the get-go. Students don't understand how that kind of data can be used against them as much as it can help them. This is separate from all the issues of data security. No one can truly protect personal data online. If SBS encourages students to actively engage with Naviance, especially the survey/career options, then we are allowing a third-party, for-profit corporation to build psychological profiles on our children. At the very, very least, there must be a way for students' families to opt out of this. All three known data breaches affecting Washoe County school districts have been by district-approved vendors. All of the above and everything else regarding Naviance should have been fully vetted before the boosters paid for it. In addition, parents deserve to have all the facts before allowing their children's data to be shared from Infinite Campus to Naviance. A history of broken promises. The boosters paid for one-on-one devices without faculty input, and the program was approved by the district in a private Incline High School meeting. When Incline High School became a one-on-one school, the parents were promised two things, and some of the promises were not kept."
John Appolito.
Thank you. I'm just actually going to let the interim superintendent make a quick comment about that.
So I'd ask Dr. Parks to look into this matter today, and it is an opt-out form, and it actually hasn't even been approved yet by the district from our IT department. So, there is no contract in place for Naviance at this point in time, and it is an opt-out.
My name is John Appolito. I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children. I'm a former K-12 teacher, and I have two kids left in the district. I too would like to request from interim Superintendent McNeil and this board that you stop the implementation of Naviance at Incline High School. It is not a district-approved vendor. This entity, Incline Boosters, according to you guys, they gave $760,000 to Incline High School. Don't let this buy something that we don't want and that we don't need. Please say no to Naviance. If you aren't willing to stop the implementation of Naviance, make it an opt-in program, not an opt-out. Most parents have no idea about the data in Infinite Campus, and that Infinite Campus data will go to Naviance. Please don't do this without educating parents. A few years ago, Margaret got cut off on this part. The district, with funds from the booster, the district implemented a one-to-one program. Most of you weren't here. Kristin and Angie were here. There were two promises made. One, we wouldn't have to take the school-issued devices. So far, that promise has been kept. The second promise is we wouldn't have to log in and share data with vendors. That promise has already been broken within three years. And even if something is promised with Naviance, we don't know if it'll be kept or broken, like the one-to-one promise was broken. My kids, their entire geometry class is online. It's ridiculous. As a math teacher, it's the worst way to learn math. It's the only way they can do it at Incline High School, and since it's required for graduation, kids cannot get through without joining Khan Academy and spending a couple hours a day on Khan Academy. It's probably about an hour and a half just for geometry. I have a FOIA request on Naviance specifically. We ask questions like, exactly what Infinite Campus data would be shared with Naviance? Would the parents be notified of exactly what data was shared? What type of profiles would Naviance create on our children? How long will Naviance's data and profiles be stored? Who will Naviance share student data and profiles with? Will parents have access to the data stored and the profiles created by Naviance? This has been controversial in many districts, and I have several articles here after the FOIA request. Hopefully, you guys will read them. I emailed it to you, too. Don't let these people keep taking over our schools. We don't need it. Some of us don't want it, and it's going to be a big can of worms. Some of the articles, I don't have time to... Last night, a non-denominational prayer group invited me to their prayers. They thanked me for what I'm doing. They prayed to protect the children, and some of the things they prayed for is decisions you guys are making here, what they're needing protecting from, and it's very frustrating. Please don't allow this group to take over our schools, to continue to take over our schools again. I know $761,000 is a lot of money. Say no to this one thing. Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, thank you. Trustee Katie Simon-Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify for the public. My understanding is that the item we are being asked to approve is just that statute requires that we make a public recognition of acceptance of funds, and we are not approving any program that is being used by those funds. We have had these donations made, and by statute, we must acknowledge that publicly that the donation has been made. That's all that the board is approving today.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, since there's no further public comment on the consent agenda, oh, is there one in the back there? And this is a public comment about the consent agenda?
This is just a public comment, similar to what the last two speakers were talking about.
Okay.
Is that okay? I thought it was just a general public comment.
That's coming up next, after we approve the consent agenda. Sorry. Okay, so now, if there's no further public comment on the consent agenda items, then we'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
And a sec, a motion by trustee Katie Simon-Holland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Calvert. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the consent agenda passes, and now we will move on to our general public comment period. I would like to just remind everyone, so this is a time to make general public comment, not specifically related to any of our upcoming agenda items. We will provide opportunity to speak about specific agenda items at the time that those items are opened for discussion. So, right now, just general public comment. JJ?
Margaret Martini.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Margaret Martini, Incline Village. The only current Washoe County school board member who has spent her career as a K-12 teacher is trustee Ellen Minetto. Here are trustee Minetto's passionate comments about Washoe County School District's harmful use of technology. Quote, "I want to thank you for your presentation. I want to thank you for your concern for our kids. Now I'm going to drop the other shoe. I really struggle with all this stuff. I do. I know one of my previous students comes home from desert skies every day, loves his new school, has terrible headache all day and all night. I just don't think there is enough research that's been done for us to be implementing all of this. My very own son and grandson, some of their information was leaked. As a result, my grandson does not go to Washoe County School District anymore. I feel like we are putting the children, very possibly, in a lot of jeopardy and without their parents' consent. We just do it. We need opt-in, not opt-out." Sorry, that wasn't part of her quote. "I think parents should get to say what happens with their children. And even though it can cause a lot more work for a lot of teachers, if parents don't want their kids involved in this, then they shouldn't be involved. And that's just me." End of quote. Here's another quote from a parent in the Washoe County School District. "My daughter attends Poli-Catus as a pilot school for the technology program Washoe wants to implement in other schools. We had major reservations with this program, and as the year has progressed, we have seen our daughter's grades dropping. She is in fifth grade, and they spend much of their time on computers during the day. Their homework is all in the computer, which is often over one hour of homework. I have talked to other families at our school, and they are finding the same results. Dropping grades and learning retention is very low, especially in math. I took the survey and found that the first few questions to be worded in such a way that didn't allow comments or voting against this program. I feel like the others in the survey won't do much anyway. We are looking into other options for education next year, as Dipoli will be implementing this program as well." So, here's our concern. Opting in is much more important than opting out, because you can opt out by default. But if the parents are adequately informed about these programs, then they should have the opportunity to opt in, not opt out. That gets them more involved. Thank you.
John Appolito.
Still John Appolito, still president of Protect Nevada Children. I would like to thank trustee Minetto. She appears to be the only one up there who really has the same concerns that we do. And what our concerns are, just to be very clear for the hundredth time, we're concerned about the future of the kids. The profiles these third-party vendors are creating on our kids, we never see, you never see. We submitted a FOIA request asking which vendors create profiles on our kids, and your response was basically, "We don't have to answer it, so we're not going to." The more accurate response probably would have been, "We have no idea." That would have been honest. Well, thank you, trustee Minetto. The survey was ridiculous. This is the survey that we talked about when the other superintendent was here. Questions that are very leading, trying to get a desired response. It's, none of our concerns, none of trustees Minettos were on the survey. She's a trustee. None of what we've been talking about for three years, none of our concerns were on the survey. You had to write them in. People like the Wall Street Journal have talked about, "Schools push for tech in every classroom. Now parents are pushing back." There was nothing like that. The survey was all about, "How much money do you want to spend to get new computers?" The rich get smart, the poor get technology. The Irish Times, "Technology can hurt student learning," research shows. That fifth-grade mom, she probably won't come. There were three moms that I was communicating with. They're all afraid to come speak to you people. It's very frustrating, and you know what you're doing. And I don't see any changes. I was hoping that there'd be some changes, interim superintendent, but I don't see it. This report that I've brought you guys a couple times shows those kids at Poli-Catus, by fourth grade, they're going to be a year behind in reading if they're on the devices all the time, starting in kindergarten. It's frustrating. It seems like you guys don't care. The survey, I can't even believe this went out. This is disgraceful. I don't know if you guys saw this, but please stop. Let parents opt out. And that prayer group, last night, it came up that Washoe County School District was the, we had a bill. We got some laws changed this last session. One of the bills we had was SB 403, which would have allowed parents to opt out of their children sharing data and information with third-party vendors, tech education, supposedly vendors. The only entity in the state that opposed our bill was Washoe County School District. That came up in our prayer group last night. You guys should be ashamed. So, we're going to try to meet with interim superintendent McNeil and see if you guys will oppose that again, because we're going to try to bring it back. I get frustrated. Maybe I should be praying more. Maybe I need to go to more of those prayer groups. Maybe that would help. I don't know. Thank you.
Paula Arzoyan.
Hello, my name is Paula Arzoyan. I teach at Swope Middle School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you today. I am here representing Empower Nevada Teachers. We are a grassroots educational and teacher advocacy group that was started by current Washoe County teachers. We are starting to spread across the state as well. Our main focus is to bring awareness to the issues facing the public school system in Nevada, and to get teachers, parents, business owners, community members, and educational leaders such as yourself, more active in advocating the state to properly fund education. As many of you know, education in Nevada is drastically underfunded. We rank 46th in the nation in per pupil spending, and spend nearly 40% less than other states do on average. Our public education is failing our students and the educators that serve it, and this is not acceptable. You also know that we are losing teachers at an alarming rate in this state. Enrollment at the College of Education at UNR is down over 30% over the past few years, and many new teachers leave before they finish their fifth year of teaching. Entire classes are being taught by long-term substitutes, and the district is having to pay extra money for teachers to come out of retirement, because we simply don't have the people who want to fill these positions. Many factors are leading to the exodus of teachers, but the biggest is that we simply don't have the proper resources and funding, and as a result, to many people, teaching is no longer an attractive profession. I'm here today to ask for your help. As leaders, you have a voice and a platform that carries beyond that of a normal citizen. We need our elected school board members and our superintendent to loudly and assertively advocate the state to properly fund education. Our teachers and children deserve better than this. We do see this as a situation that will continue to worsen if we don't start acting now. Public education is a cornerstone of a developed society, and it impacts every facet of our community. Thank you.
Steve Dolan.
I believe you care, and probably all of you have played this game before, but it's a counting game for children. And it's ten fingers, right? I've got one, two, skip to three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Now, that's an example not of math for children, but of logic and critical thinking. That's where the physical needs to take place, because learning's a complex relationship that requires more than two-dimensional experiences offered through computers. To understand the future you're dictating to our children in the world of data mining and gold diggers is really what data mining's about. And computer education, you must read a book, and I'll spell it for you. It just came out in October. It's critical, really, for everyone to read. I'll spell it because of the way it is. The first word in the title of the book is M-I-N-D-F asterisk C-K. It's one word, and the subtitle is Cambridge Analytica and the Plot to Break America. It's written by the founder of Cambridge Analytica, Christopher Wiley. It's a very important book. If you don't read this book, you might as well just burn George Orwell's 1984. So, it's very important. It deals with data mining. It deals with all of the things we're going through, and the vulnerability of our children is really important there. You've heard me say this before, probably over the last two or three years, but critical thinking is very important. And at my daughter's elementary school in Palo Alto, they would not let her use computers for math, because it requires critical thinking. And now, that was an elementary school. Critical thinking in a physical world, as I just demonstrated with my fingers, the touch, the feeling, is all very important. So she graduated from college with a job before she graduated, a high-paying job, and they wouldn't let her use computers. So she worked right into that. She's now in her second year out of college. Computers and programmers are limited to two-dimensional world, and explanations get so circular and convoluted that concepts get lost in other parts of a young brain, becoming a waste of time. A young mind needs to connect the analytical world with the physical world, sight, sound, touch. Computers cannot do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Ben Alfry.
Okay, good afternoon, trustees, and Washoe County staff and administrators and community members, too. I had a chance to watch the virtual forum about the Anaphylaxis Policy. So that's my latest information about that policy, and I've come to, I hope, just continue to provide a perspective that's helpful as the board navigates this very complex issue. Some of the strongest arguments I've heard against such a policy have to do with personal responsibility, and I would say advocacy, the ability to advocate. And in fact, that's brought up, it's been brought up several times, that, you know, students who are less able to advocate would benefit more from such a policy than students who were able to advocate for themselves, and they wouldn't need a policy. I really want to try to drive home the point to everybody that, to me, this issue is about access, not advocacy. It's not about whether somebody knows not to put certain food in their mouths. I teach personal accountability at home, and we're very good with that. But when the classroom contains poison, and you can't fully participate in the educational experience, that looks like an access problem to me. So while advocacy is important, and certainly we should make it so every student can advocate for themselves effectively, that's not the end of the story. And regardless of age group or anything else, access is what matters here. There was a really good point, Victor, I think you were the one who brought it up. We were, in the virtual forum, they were talking about, what about the cooking classes, the home ec-type classrooms? What do we do in there? Can we tell a student, "No, you can't take this class, because there are toxins in this class that might kill you"? What do you do for access for that person? So, there are corners of this that are extremely complicated, and Victor, I don't know the answer to that one either. And this is something that we arrived at. I sent an email out to the board a while ago, kind of going over a risk exposure chart. And at the top of the chart was shared food. So that's why shared food is the tip of the spear, because it's the one that we think we can do the most about that affects people the least. There are all kinds of other corners of this that are probably impossible to solve. And so that's not what we're asking for. I don't know any parents who are asking for that. But when we can do something, we should. Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, per the approved agenda, we'll now move on to Agenda Item 5.1, and our interim superintendent is going to leave the room, as we will be discussing the job description, the official job description for the superintendent of schools, as part of the search and hiring of a new permanent superintendent. And since our interim superintendent will be applying for that position, it is appropriate for her not to be here. And we are joined by Emily Ellison, who's going to lead us in this conversation.
Good afternoon, trustees. Thank you for having me here today. I'm excited to move this work forward, and I know it's a little bit unusual to open my computer in order to do this, but I have a feeling as we move through the text of the draft job description, we might need to make changes or work on language, and I thought it might be easier to do it in typed format than handwritten, so we don't take up so much time. Well, the computer is starting, and I'm opening Word. So, I think I started a previous board meeting that we were waiting for the stakeholder feedback process, and for our consultant, James, to produce a report regarding that information in order to bring this job description forward, because I feel like there's a lot of technical information that needs to be included around the roles and responsibilities of this position. But of course, we want to make sure that the document reflects the priorities of the district as well, and the values of the district. And so, that process that he went through was very informative, and it was good to have his information to be able to include. And so then we added to the job description, and you have a draft in your packet, and that's also available online. The approach that I took to developing the language that's included, included that feedback. I looked at school districts and pulled job descriptions down from school districts that are currently hiring for superintendents, because I felt like that would be the most up-to-date source of information, and those represented a mix of large and small school districts, both in-state and out-of-state. And I looked at nine total and found- And I looked at mine total and found that there were many common themes among those districts, and so you'll see those reflected here as well. The formatting, of course, is current, is consistent with our current job description formatting, and includes a summary description, exemplary duties and responsibilities for the role. And then within that exemplary duties and responsibilities, there's kind of a thematic organization to each of those paragraphs. I'll share a little bit more about that with you in just a moment. Employment standards are reflected. Those include education, experiencing, and license requirements. And then requisite knowledge and skills that provide the foundation for the duties and responsibilities outlined in the sections above. So in terms of the bulk of the job description, I mentioned that it's organized, at least in a way that made sense in my mind, and kind of in themes. And so the first grouping there are responsibilities around building and sustaining organizational culture. The second is focused on educational vision and instructional leadership. Then we have financing, or finance, and then funding. Stakeholder engagement, change management, and the role of the superintendent as lead change agent. There are two sections for work with the Board of Trustees, so kind of the relationship expectations, and then tasks related to the Board of Trustees' relationship. We have policy represented, the relationship between the district and the Nevada Department of Education, human resources functions, then operations and capital, and then we have some language related to legal responsibilities and delegation of duties. And so I thought, for the purposes of this discussion, because there is a lot of information contained here, that I would just kind of open for discussion. And this is probably one of the things that I enjoy most in my role, and I get to engage with colleagues a lot in this capacity as well. So we just have kind of an open discussion, and you tell me kind of the end result that we're hoping for, right? What does it look like to demonstrate whatever skills or responsibilities that we talk about? And then I'll kind of turn it into some proposed job description language, and then we can talk about that and wordsmith it from there. And as I mentioned, I'll capture some notes electronically. So I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Emily. Look to my colleagues. Does anyone want to start us off with comments? Or, all right, trustee Katie Simon-Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Emily, and your team, for the great work, the research that was done. I think there was tremendous work to capture some best practices nationally, and that's exactly what we want to demonstrate for the community and for our district. There were just a couple of things that I thought we could add, and I'm not going to presume that I could provide job description language for them, but one of the things in the, in the, let's see, it said the second paragraph on the second page, serves as advisor to the board. And somehow, the word "policy," I don't, we do have "policy" in the district strategic plan of goals, "policy" is okay. That's a good one. But I didn't see the role of being the board's liaison to staff and ensuring open and comprehensive communication with the staff. Since the superintendent is our only employee and oversees the staff, that's a really important role for us. I appreciate the, you know, the responsibility for providing to the board. And I would say, not only information that's pertinent, but that is timely. It's important for us to have timely information to be able to make good decisions. And just the whole decision support piece, I thought that was good, but let's include something about the communication with staff. And then I also, and maybe it's in there, and I didn't see it adequately, but the responsibility for the safety of students, staff, visitors, and for the management of emergencies. Yes, we have an emergency manager here, but as the chief executive officer, the superintendent is accountable for the management of emergencies. And then I just, I'm not sure it belongs here. We talked about, under the licensure, which is in the employment standards, that we would expect the person to obtain a valid Nevada administrative license within a certain timeframe. And I don't know if we wanted to discuss having that in the job description. It does say "ability to obtain," but I think we want to make sure they do obtain a valid Nevada administrative license. And those are just some thoughts to kick off the conversation. Again, great job. I think we want to reference and really emphasize the world-class nature of the expectations we have around vision and innovation and responsibility for outcomes, so.
Can I ask one quick clarifying question?
Yeah.
So as it relates to the open and comprehensive communication with staff, between staff and the board, I tried to call it out in terms of providing applicable internal and external stakeholder feedback for decision-making. Are you thinking that that kind of two-way communication happens outside of just decision-making? Tell me more about that, so I can kind of work on.
Well, it's not only about decision-making, but there are lots of things that, for example, making sure that we know when there are accidents that involve students, or when there are safety issues at schools. We don't want to, and we have as a policy statement on, in our board policies, that board members are not going to be drilling down to call principals about what's going on at their school. The superintendent is our chief communication agent with staff, and so we want to make sure that the communication is recognized, that the superintendent is accountable and responsible to make sure that the board members are apprised, and that staff can be communicating their perspective to board members through the superintendent. So I think that's, you know, it's an important thing, and I think it's, I put it in, for me, in the segment that has to do with the relationship with the board, because we're not just stakeholders. We do have, you know, a specific different relationship with the superintendent. So that's just some things to kick it off. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, trustee Simon-Holland. And the other, trustee Cottle.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Emily, for your work on this, and to your staff. I know as a board, we have discussed not limiting ourselves to just education professionals, but allowing the opportunity, if necessary, for non-for-profit executives and maybe private industry executives to potentially be qualified for this job. So in the education and experience section, when I see master's of education, educational administration, or education-related field, and then same thing for doctorate, I get concerned that those individuals then get eliminated from potentially qualifying. And it may be worth saying master's degree in educational administration or related field, or you could say, or executive-related field, or something that opens the door for them and doesn't close it. Because I think we really have had quite a few discussions in making sure that those individuals, if we decide to go that route, that is an option for us, and there could be some really good CEOs for non-for-profits that have a doctorate in something else, or a master's degree in something else, and it's not in education. And our description is saying that they would not qualify. They would have to essentially go back to school, which they may have to anyway to get a license. So it's something that I think maybe we should discuss, now if we want to leave it, or change it a little bit, or what is our preference as a group?
Thank you, trustee Cottle. Trustee Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
For vice president, sorry.
Whatever. Thank you, Madam President. Along that line, this might turn out, similarly, I hadn't know the did it to the same extent that my colleague trustee Cottle had, clerk Cottle had. But I did notice in the, in the knowledge of and skilled in sections, we've pretty much narrowed it down to someone that has educational experience. I mean, it would be, I mean, it would have to be a really special candidate to not bring that in, but I just think that we agree that we want to look at many viable candidates that could be it, and maybe that special person's out there and has an interest. We certainly don't want to eliminate them. So when we talk about things, principles and procedures, knowledge of principles and procedures, for an example, utilizing school district administration, they may not have that, but it may be an administrative, something that's related to that. I don't know how we've, like, I'm like trustee Simon-Holland, I don't know the HR speak around that, but I do think that with a statement like that, we are definitely limiting ourselves to someone who's been in an educational environment. Again, would have to be a really special candidate to not have that, but I do think, we agree as a board that we wanted to keep it open. And the same thing as skilled in improving academic and organizational success, maybe that can be open to and/or or something along those lines, so it isn't restricted to academic success. A lot of the other things in there, I think, are really important, but those are just the two that sit out to me as well.
So just to clarify, I hear what you're saying, and I had a couple of people look at it, right, through a few different lenses, because when you're borrowing from other job descriptions, too, a lot of that is very school district speak.
Yes.
As it relates to the knowledge of section, even if it was the really exceptional candidate coming from a completely different industry, I thought I heard in a previous conversation that we still wanted kind of some requisite knowledge, right? So not somebody who was coming in with zero knowledge, for example, of school funding formulas, or kind of the legislative process for us. Maybe I misheard that, but are we saying that we're okay with the potential for somebody coming from a completely different industry with kind of no foundational knowledge? I guess what end of the spectrum do we want to shoot for to then try and modify the language?
Well, I would say, just, this is, just speaking as one trustee, I think the only person, the only candidate that will have the knowledge of the principles and procedures utilized in school district administration are in school funding mechanisms. I think that would, if it were a candidate that, you know, you're really astute, community member, for an example, might know that there's a funding formula, and, you know, we always talk about the funding formula and its adequacy or inadequacy and so on, generally, from that standpoint. But when I read it and hear it, it made me think of, they needed to have a more intimate knowledge of that.
Okay.
And I just don't think if you work in a school district, unless you work with a school system in that manner, you're just not going to have an intimate level of knowledge.
So could we use a word?
Again, that's just me, so maybe.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I, I'll just ask one more question, and then.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Could a word like, you know, foundational knowledge of, or, I don't know, I'm.
Familiarity with, or something like that, perhaps?
I'm drawing a blank on like the right word at this moment, but just to kind of qualify the level of knowledge that we're looking for? And I, you still will have to land on what that is, but.
Trustee Simon-Holland.
And I appreciate the conversation, and I think it is a nuanced distinction. It's a calibration that we want to find, because I, for one, do want someone who has knowledge of best practices in school district administration and, you know, academic outcomes. They don't have to be an instructional person, but I do want someone who has a knowledge of what are the best practices in achieving academic excellence for students. So I wouldn't say principles and procedures utilized. I would say, you know, knowledges of, knowledge of best practices in school district administration and leadership, because a person could be very well-read and not have worked in school district administration. I would also take out the school funding mechanisms and just leave it at finance and organizational budget management. Because again, funding mechanisms are something that a smart person will, you know, be a quick study in, but we want, we want somebody who has high-level knowledge of best practices.
And that's, if I may, that's something that I think I could go with, because if you, if you have an interest in going into school district administration, that's the kind of reading and research you should be doing to prepare yourself, in case you get that tap on the shoulder, and we want that candidate to do that. Again, back to funding mechanism, it's going to vary from state to state. So you may, someone that knows it really well here can go to Iowa or someplace and.
At ground zero.
And exactly, and have to start all over. So as long as they have the capability, you know, the ability to do that, and certainly the willingness, they understand how important it is from a school finance standpoint, I think that would, I think that would, that would satisfy the concerns that I had around there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Simon-Holland.
Thank you both. Great conversation. I had made note of similar things, especially the education part, and it being, looking for it to mimic a little bit more the experience, and saying in some way that it's, the education part of it being desired, but not building it into the, but however, you wordsmith it. I think I agree, though, with the comments. And then I'd missed the knowledge of part, and it didn't stand out as much to me, but I think in the skilled in, I just made the same note, that if it could be softened a little bit, that maybe that's desired, that they, you know, are skilled in improving academic and, you know, academic parts of the paragraph, I guess. So I think we all agree, it seems like in our previous conversations about kind of where we stand with the candidate and their background. And obviously, we will see a lot of candidates, I think, that have an academic background. We just don't want it to prohibit, as trustee Cottle said.
Okay.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Emily, I'm curious to see, and another community has been pretty adamant about wanting the next superintendent to have, to primarily live in Washoe County. And not just their home address in Washoe County, I mean, someone could have an apartment here and be living elsewhere, but their primary address would be here. Is that something that you think would be appropriate to put in a job description? Is that better for the contract phase, or could it be both? I'm just kind of curious what you think about that.
I know people feel pretty passionately about this. I don't think that I would be comfortable putting it in a job description, because I don't think it's, I think it's hard to defend as a relevant job criteria if the person is here and they want to spend every weekend at their cabin in Colorado. I don't know that we have a valid reason to screen them out, but I would look to counsel for some guidance, too, in terms of the contract.
Yeah, excuse me. I agree on the job description. I don't recommend it in the job description for those exact reasons. With regard to the contract, I mean, you could put it in there, but again, you would still run into the problems of, what if they have a, more realistically, a cabin in Tahoe, or it's just across the California line, or Almanor, or something, you know, which is kind of common up here, I guess. So, but it's not, I know that's important to the board, and I'm sure we can figure out a way to handle it. I wasn't totally prepared for that question, to be totally honest, so.
It is in the contract.
Yeah, right. It's, we had it as a provision in the, in the previous contract, we did, so.
Any other comments or notes for Emily? Trustee Minetto.
So, thank you, Madam President. So Emily, could you tell me how we're going to word, what was it? The licenses, the possession, the possession of, or ability to obtain? Are we going to change the wording there? I mean, anybody has an ability to obtain.
Maybe not. If you're coming from a completely different field, you might decide that you don't want to complete a whole nother degree program. I think it's, I think it's a good conversation for you all to have. I might suggest something along the lines of, you know, not putting a particular time period in the job description necessarily, because people will have different requirements to complete, but, you know, perhaps something like, must be able to obtain within a time period specified in the employment contract, or something like that, since everyone might have different, different obligations to complete.
Trustee Simon-Holland.
Thank you. I was just, I was just going to say, I think we can deal with in the contract, but I would still like to have people have notice. I don't know what it takes to get a Nevada administrative license, but I would think somebody should be able to do it within two years. I maybe, I don't know, can you, do you know, Emily?
If they were doing a whole degree program, and also assuming all of these new responsibilities, I would say it would probably be too, I have to, three years.
Does the administrative license require a specific degree program?
Yes.
It does, okay.
Yes, there's a course of study that would need to be completed in order to obtain that license.
So could we say within three years, within no more than three years? I just don't, I don't want to leave it open, because ability doesn't even signify willingness to obtain.
I can, but I won't.
Yes, exactly.
If I may, just to piggyback on that. If, if I may, just to piggyback on that, before we switch up trustee Cottle, I do like, I do like a time limit on it. I think it also shares with the candidates that that's important to us, because they'll see this way before they see anything related to a contract, or anything like that, and frankly, outside of three years, I wouldn't want, and that's kind of a stretch for me, quite frankly, but I'm hearing what you're saying, in case they have to complete a new field study, but it's, we wouldn't want a superintendent, a leader that doesn't have their, we wouldn't want a longer period of time than three minutes, three minutes. We wouldn't want longer than three minutes either, just for the record, but, but, but any longer than three years, I would be completely uncomfortable with that.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, that was exactly what I was going to say, as someone that, you know, I have a master's degree, but I don't have anything education, let's say, you know, if someone like me wanted to apply, that'd be one of the first questions, is so, do I have to? How long does it take? What does that mean? Because, and it helps, not only helps the candidates, it helps future boards, because the last thing you want, hire a superintendent, and this kind of gets forgotten about 10 years, and that board at the time goes, hey, you know, you don't have, you don't have the license, and we don't really like you anymore, so now we're gonna, and it just creates a, just a mess. So, making it very clear what the expectation is, I think, is super important, because it may, because candidates, if they don't want to do it, and someone says, you know, I don't have any education degrees, I don't want to take three years, and they choose not to apply, and that's, you know, good for them, but if they apply, they're, we can't get to the end of the process, and they go, wait a minute, you want me to do what? And then, all of a sudden, we look at each other and go, oh, now what do we do? So, I think it's really important to be very clear that the expectation is you do get it in a certain period of time, and that is, that's just the end of that.
Okay. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. Do we, have we given you enough direction at this time? Do you...
I'm going to recap for you a couple of things, and then I'll have you make a motion on that. So, under education, we would be taking out the, where it says master's degree in educational administration or education-related field, we'd be taking out the reference to education-related field, and just saying related field. Then, under license, we'll wordsmith that in order to give, either you currently possess, or you will possess within three years, a Nevada administrator's license. Under knowledge of, we'll start that with best practices in school administration, and then take out school funding mechanisms, so that it just says finance and organizational budget management. Then, under skilled in, we would say improving academic and/or organizational success.
Trustee Simon Holland?
I was just going to ask on the, backing up on the knowledge of, I had just thrown in school district administration and leadership, it's not just the administration piece, but best practices in school district administration and leadership.
And leadership, okay. All right, so then, under skilled in, we would say improving academic and/or organizational success. And then, trustee Simon Holland made a comment about communication between the board and the superintendent, perhaps something along the lines of acts as a liaison between the board of trustees and staff, ensuring open channels of communication are developed and encouraged. Let's wordsmith that a little bit, so we get where you want to go in that section.
Maybe that open and comprehensive communication occurs, responsible for ensuring that open and comprehensive communication occurs. Does that work for folks? I see nods.
Responsible for ensuring comprehensive and open communication occurs. Do you want to specify between what parties, or just leave it in that section?
Well, it's the staff and the board.
Okay.
And that the superintendent is the, is the responsible person for being the liaison between the staff and the board. And certainly, there are other comments, and I want to make sure for the public record, that we recognize that there are other places in the job description where we talk about the responsibility to communicate with the public, and with the community, and with other stakeholders, and that is certainly a responsibility we all share, but the superintendent has responsibility for the district, but this, this one piece is just about making sure that the, that the staff and the board are connected.
Okay, so within that first, or second paragraph on the second page, we would add a sentence that says acts as liaison between the board of trustees and staff, ensuring comprehensive and open communication occurs.
That works for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, we talked about safety of students and staff and visitors and management of emergencies.
I would see that under the bottom paragraph on page two, execution of all responsibilities and duties, and it states it in the negative, superintendent will not cause or allow any practice, blah, 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 but I would add another sentence, that the superintendent is responsible for, we can't say ensuring safety, but is responsible for promoting practices and procedures that, or I guess, developing and implementing practices and procedures that promote safety for students, staff, and visitors. Is that, does that work? Okay?
Say it one more time.
What did I say?
Responsible for developing and implementing...
Practices and procedures, a lot of Ps in here, that promote the safety of students, staff, and visitors. And then, perhaps it would be a separate sentence, that the, as the chief executive officer, the superintendent is responsible, has overall responsibility for the management of emergencies affecting the school district. You're frowning, counsel, is that...
Yeah, no, I'm happy. But, I was reading a statute, and there's three types of, sorry, not statute, NAC 391.160, trying to find out the criteria to help you decide a number for how long to get the administrative license, yeah. So, there's three types of administrative endorsements, and I'm fairly certain you want the professional administrator of a school endorsement, but what I don't want is somebody to play a game and say, I have a professional administrator of a program, or I am supervisor, receive an administrative endorsement of a supervisor, or of curriculum and instruction, right? So, we might ought to clarify which one we're looking for. And, so I wasn't sure either, so I went down and read the statute, and it says, "A person who holds an endorsement as a professional administrator of a school may be employed by a school district as, list several people, a superintendent of schools." So, I think we ought to maybe specify that a little bit more, but I will say that, just looking through this, it is a lot of semesters of class, a lot of hours of, to the, I haven't taken, I haven't been in school in a while, but it appears to be three years of teaching experience in kindergarten, grades one through 12, which they'll probably meet that, a valid renewable license to teach at one of those levels, and then 24 semester hours, which I think is a year, if I recall correctly, of several different things, and then another 12 semester hours, and mind you, this person's also going to be our full-time employee, so I, I'm not here to, you guys set policy, I'm just letting you know, three years, maybe that is enough, it's up, maybe longer, it's up to you, but I just wanted to, I'm just trying to help you out on the conversation, or I'm trying to ruin the conversation.
Madam President, if I could go back to just sort of re-grounding ourselves in why that was important to us, we have had situations in the district in which, when there is a chain of command situation, we have to have someone who is, who holds the administrative credential to be able to execute certain functions within the district, it's a matter of statute, and so, we're, we're not trying to be, you know, overly harsh, or overly exclusive, and you've heard our conversation about wanting to be inclusive about people who bring other experience to the district, but we do have some responsibility for them to have that credential. I, I'm with Dr. Taylor, I'm, I'm a little bit iffy about putting it out past three years. We could have a situation in which the entire time we have someone here, they don't have an administrative credential, and then we've defeated the reason why we needed it and asked for it.
Absolutely.
So, I, maybe we, we put in there, you know, obtaining one within three years, or, you know, or by agreement with the board of trustees. I mean, I know you were, you started there with putting it in the contract, but I, maybe we just say, can you put it back over, JJ, so I can see what the licenses part says? There we go. So, possession of, or, and it's not just ability to obtain, possession of, or the obtaining of a valid Nevada administrative license within three years, or by contract, I don't know, something like that.
May I suggest something?
Yeah, please.
How about ability to obtain within three years? Because if you look at this criteria, you're going to know whether you're close enough to obtain it, and work full-time, and get it within three years, then you get your three years, because if you don't meet certain criteria, you can't even start the process, you know?
Yeah.
So, so if you're an applicant, to your point, you're going to look at it and go, I can't make it, so I'm not even going to apply, or, oh, I can't do this. So, it kind of covers both, maybe? I don't know, just a thought.
That works for me.
So, would we, if I may, so would we just leave it as ability?
Yes, it is.
To obtain within three years.
Okay, but then, it's their ability to obtain, to obtain it within three years, doesn't mean they're going to do it.
There you go again.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
Is there wording that we can use to make them, not make them, but have it understood that within three years, we're showing some kind of progress, that they're showing us something, that they are willing to at least obtain the license within the three years? I mean, if we're seeing something, that they're going to classes, and they're trying to do it, and maybe they do need a little bit more time, are we willing to work with them as far as that goes as well?
Well, and I think we, as we've talked about, there is room for us later to get more specific about our, you know, in the interview process, in the contract, about our expectations around this. I think we do want to set the precedence in this initial job description of what we're looking for, and I, I'm wondering, do we have to be so limited in this, I mean, can we just openly say that, you know, the board of trustees would like a candidate that has a license? I mean, I think we're trying to make it real brief here, but could we get lengthier and just say, either has the license, or is willing to get one, and, and would do so in a, you know, three-year period, and just expand on it? Trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam President. Perhaps we could say licenses, colon, it is the expectation of the board of trustees, that the successful candidate will possess or obtain a valid Nevada administrative license within three years of employment, except by agreement with the board, because I do think we may want to, I mean, we can't put something in the job description that we are not going to absolutely, yeah.
I think if we say expectation, does that leave us some wiggle room? Because expectation doesn't say you shall, it says, that's what we expect, and then as you get in, and if it's, we can say it differently in the contract, based upon this candidate's background, we know it's going to take them three and a half years, or something.
I, I think it conveys, it's the expectation that the successful candidate will have it, or will get it. I think that's...
Oh, no, absolutely.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, yeah.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just wondering if we need the contract part of it, if we just leave it as our expectation, and then the contract may stipulate something different, may stipulate three and a half years, if we know they're close, and...
I see.
Because expectation, I mean, if we say expectation, it isn't, you have to have it, it's, that's our expectation, and it is our expectation. What do you think, counsel?
I think that's great. I mean, I really do, I think it's perfect, it achieves what you want, and quite frankly, anybody who is really qualified and is doing their due diligence is going to hear this conversation, I hope, and they're going to go, all right, I know what these guys want, and I'm going to go do it. So, they, it's clear, it's clear by this, it's going to be clear in that language.
Okay, so, did we leave, let me confirm where we left the language. It is the expectation of the board, of the board of trustees, that the selected candidate will possess or will obtain within three years, a valid Nevada professional school administrator's license. Are we putting on, unless by exception and contract, or are we leaving that part off?
Yeah, I, I could see the point, that if, if we're saying the expectation is that we don't need to have that kind of clause at the end, but I, I'm fine with it either way, so, I don't know.
Counsel say it.
Would you say, counsel, and how are we doing on that?
I think it's fine either way, it gives you enough wiggle room, expectations change if this person comes in, and as trustee Calvert said, it takes them three years and a couple extra months, and they're doing a great job, I think we, I would imagine the board would be like, keep going, you know, so...
I like the exception language, just because I like when there's documentation for why exceptions are made in the future, but...
Okay.
So, you'd like to have it?
I would. Not to mess up the conversation, but...
I think you caught everything on my list, does everyone feel that recitation of the updates captured everything? Oh, trustee Cottle?
I just wanted to clarify on the education piece, that the change is being made to the master's degree line and the doctorate line, because I think when you read it back, it was just a master's, I just want to make sure.
You're right, good catch. Yep, so, education-related will just become related.
So, but let's, let's just close the loop for Emily, because she would prefer that the license language say, it's the expectation that the person will possess or obtain within three years, unless, unless...
Unless by exception and contract.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and if our HR professional says she'd be more comfortable, I'm more comfortable.
I thought legal was going to be aligned to me on this.
I'll play devil's advocate for a second, because, what could I get paid to do? So, if you, if I take the job, and I presume I'm going to get it done in three years, how do I know to negotiate upfront, three years and six months, or four years? I'm expecting to meet the three years when I took the gig, and it's taken me longer than expected, so, so to that point, we're going to write some general language, or how do I know I'm not going to meet the three years ahead of time?
That's fair.
Right, because I'm doing a contract, I'm presuming I'm going to meet this three years, so, either way, I think we're fine, but...
All right.
Just food for thought.
You swayed me. I have an advocate.
All right, so we've removed the...
The expectation of the board of trustees, that the selected candidate will possess or will obtain within three years, a valid Nevada professional school administrator's license.
Okay, I think that's good.
All right.
All right, so then I would be looking for a motion to accept the job description with the changes made in today's meeting. Trustee Dr., Vice President, Dr. Taylor?
It's so complicated.
It is, sorry.
Or Angie. Madam President, I move that the board of trustees accept the, the job description as edited by, as edited at this table, we accept it as final.
All right. The second by trustee Cottle, motion by Vice President Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
Great, thank you, everyone.
That's a big step, thank you. Good work, everyone. Yeah, now we'll move on to agenda item 4.01, we're going to bring the interim superintendent back into the room for a presentation on our legislative efforts, and we are joined by Lindsay Anderson, Government Affairs Director. I'm trying to stall out a little bit, until Kristen gets back in the room. I'm trying to stall out a little bit until Kristen gets back in the room.
She knows this part up front here especially.
Thank you, Madam President. Board of Trustees Lindsay Anderson, Government Affairs. I'm very aware of your agenda and the people waiting here, so I'm going to go at a particularly fast, sort of like Jeremy Aguero pace, and you can tell me to stop if there's something more interesting you want to talk about, but otherwise, I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. Just to wrap up the 2019 legislative session, you all have done a tremendous amount of work on our board policies to get them, hello, interim superintendent, aligned with legislation that was passed last session. The State Board of Education has also been making effort in that sense. Their process is a little bit longer and they're not finished with it yet. We're at sort of step one of three, but we'll see more regulatory language coming soon. The 2020 legislative interim, I wanted to give you an update that the Legislative Committee on Education, you may think that they only meet during session, but oh, no, they don't. They meet in the interim also. A combination of senators and assembly people get together and discuss issues over the interim. So you can see the committee here, and the only thing I wanted to point out is that it's very teacher-heavy. We have several current and former classroom teachers on the committee, so we are going to see an emphasis on issues related, in particular to classroom teachers. So we just had our first meeting last week. I think you probably saw some notes from that, either from the superintendents or from NASB, but I think it was well-received. They added on the February 20th meeting a discussion about assessments, so I know that's something you all have worked on in depth, and they're coming at it from their perspective as well. I'm not going to go through each one of these, except to say that in March, it's really the focus, you know, related to the conversation that we had the last time with Dr. Lamarcas around classroom safety, discipline, teacher recruitment, retention, licensure, all the things that we talk about as it relates to teachers. So that's, I think, going to be a really interesting meeting, and lots of discussion on the Commission on School Funding, which we're going to talk about here more in a second.
Lindsay, I have one quick question. The committee, I know currently has a few members that are not going to be, I mean, they've hit their term limits, so when will they appoint new committee members to fill those seats? Do they do that right after the election, or is it not until after?
Actually, the legislative terms go all the way through the election, so they are effective legislators all the way through the end of their term. The Legislative Committee on Education obviously can't pass legislation, but what they can do is they'll ultimately get to vote on 10 BDRs that they want to send to the next legislative session. So they won't replace anybody. They'll continue to fill through the end of their term, and then after the election, then we'll get the new committees going into the next legislative session. So they're not, they're perfectly able to vote on everything that the committee has authority over outside of a legislative session. Okay, so you've got sort of what their plan is on issues that they're planning to tackle. There's not just the interim Legislative Committee on Education, there's lots of other interim committees that relate to work that we do here in the school district, child welfare and juvenile justice. Healthcare obviously has an impact on our district. Energy, yesterday was the first meeting on the study on reapportionment and redistricting, which will ultimately impact you as trustees also, but redrawing the lines of all legislative districts, including all the way down to the school board level, in terms of redistricting. So they had their first meeting yesterday. That will come forward in the next legislative session. Usually it ends up in court, but let's just keep our heads held high that they get that done in the next legislative session. And then obviously the Commission on School Funding, which we're going to talk about. This is the group that's considering the legislation that passed last session around changing the Nevada plan, the way we allocate education funding in the state of Nevada. I cannot articulate how important this work is to our district and how this importance is going to be going forward in terms of getting revenue and funds the fair share for the Washoe County School District. So in the legislation, it gave the CFOs from across the districts, four CFOs were appointed into a voting role, including our own CFO, Mark Mather, so he's a voting member of the Commission on School Funding. They have since divided themselves up into two working groups, one on the formula and distribution, and one on the reporting and monitoring, which is going to be also very different than what we're currently used to. So Mr. Mather serves on the formula and distribution work group. The heat is turning up, their timeline is quickly approaching, they're feeling the pressure, they're meeting regularly, they have meetings basically over a two-day period. It's staffed by the Department of Education. I wanted to highlight, in fact, I just got an email about this today, on February 20th, they're really making a public plea for public comment as it relates to determining the weights for the different student populations that are going to be determined. So our English language learner students, our at-risk students, as well as our special education students, and garnering that educator-level, parent-level, public feedback about what those weights should be. And I know we've struggled with this here, what is the definition of an at-risk student? And how do we determine those students? And looking at more forward-looking ways than just someone who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, but other approaches, like census-based approaches and other ways we can determine what at-risk really means. Perhaps it's just being academically behind. You are at risk, and it's nothing to do with your socioeconomic status. So they're looking for feedback on that meeting on February 20th at 2:00. So I wanted to take this public opportunity to make a pitch for our community to engage in that conversation as well. I just really put down sort of some bullets for your review about what they're tasked with doing, because it is so large, but ultimately determining what base funding is, it's just, I can't tell you how big that is and how big of an impact determining what base is will have on our district, as well as those multipliers for weighted funding. Cost adjustments, we saw the cost of living between districts, determining all those factors is going to be very important. And then they'll make these recommendations to the governor as he builds his budget, really this summer, and to the next legislative session.
Lindsay, quick question. Do you know if the Commission on School Funding, have they talked about or tried to tackle the issue that all school districts face, where we have to submit our final budget while the legislature is still in session, and then after a few months, when the session ends, then we have to go back and tinker with it? Have they talked about that at all? Is that something that they might be giving recommendations to the governor about?
I would say tangentially, the work that they do will have an impact on that, only in the sense that it's, the legislation was written such that the funding will stay the same and grow at the rate of inflation and enrollment, and really, nothing more. And so assuming that it's more predictable, we shouldn't see such question marks in terms of what our per pupil funding is going to be, assuming we are projecting inflation and enrollment in a similar way that the governor's budget office is going to, so we shouldn't. And we won't conceivably have so many different categorical grant programs, those would all be part of the single formula. So I think they are addressing that problem, timing problem, by trying to make it more predictable, not in terms of changing dates on, you know, the session or submitting budgets, which I think will continue to be an issue.
So we'll be going down on February 20th, Lindsay, to make that public comment, but will you do me a favor, since it's on my to-do list, but then I could check it off today? Will you send an invitation to the trustees, so that's on their calendar as well, to go down there for February 20th?
So I mentioned their work has to be finished by the end of this fiscal year, and the districts are basically going to be required to prepare two budgets, one sort of the old way, and one in a way that we think the model they're going to recommend is going to end up. I think that we're going to have a timing issue there, so I'm sure that's going to be sort of a painful process for all of us. But the idea is to be able to compare. This is the legislative appropriation from the 2019 session, and this is what it would be under this new pupil-centered formula. And how are they different, and how will it impact our ability to serve our schools? There are plenty of other groups going on right now. Also, there's a local government fiscal working group I wanted to bring to your attention. Local governments from across the state, cities and counties and GIDs are participating, talking about the potential for property tax reform, and as school districts being the largest beneficiary of property taxes, that will have a big impact potentially on the revenue going towards education. So we have a seat at that table, and we've had a seat at that table several times now, and we've been supporting those efforts for a long time. Hopefully, we can continue to build momentum on seeing some property tax reform.
If I may, Madam President, hey, Lindsay, since we, and this is kind of connecting the two, from the funding formula to what we're talking about here from a tax standpoint, in all the conversation, I know the funding formula is about how do we do a better job of funding the monies that we have. Is there much conversation about the inadequacy of the money that we get?
Yes. So much conversation and frustration from the commissioners about, is this a zero-sum game, or are we going to be able to make recommendations? They can't change the money coming in to do the formula, but they can make recommendations to the legislature about what adequacy looks like and how they should get there. I think that's a point of contention at every single meeting. The issue of adequacy is not necessarily addressed in redistributing the formula, but they can make recommendations to the future legislature about what adequacy looks like and how they would recommend to get there.
Okay, thank you. That's a step.
It's a step. There's also a group in Washoe County that's come together. I know several of our trustees have participated in building a consensus among Washoe, well, I guess the northern Nevada regional local governments on a federal list of priorities. So that group, I know Dr. McNeil was there last week, and I think trustee Simon Holland was there, participating, modeled an effort after what in 2014, when they came together on some shared federal priorities for our community. So that's important work that I think is going to culminate in a trip to Washington, DC, and an audience with our federal delegation as a community about issues that are important to us. Obviously, we have our flavor of education, but we certainly sympathize with affordable housing and mental health services and public safety, transportation, environmental issues, how those all ultimately have a nexus at the school district. So important to have a seat at that table as well. And then I briefly wanted to touch on other work that happens right now. The campaign cycle, as many of you know, is sort of heating up. The non-judicial filing period starts in March. I personally don't consider anybody a candidate until they have signed on the dotted line, because I think that ultimately makes it official. But you can see up here, all the local seats, I didn't include school board, because I figure you all know which one of you are up and which aren't, and so I didn't want to state the obvious, but just gives you a little bit of context to some, you know, campaign action that we're going to see coming up. We do have a political activity policy that guides the work of including candidates in the work of the school districts, and so I just referenced that here. And then briefly, I want to talk about the 2021 legislature. I know it seems far away, a whole year away, and people often ask me what I do in the interim as if I'm, you know, just have my feet up and doing nothing. And I say that's like a teacher showing up on the first day of school, not having prepared anything at all. So this is really when the heavy lifting happens, to make sure that we go into a 2021 legislative session with strong footing. So you know we do have access to our own bill draft. I know it shouldn't be possessive there, so I don't mean to point out my own typos, but I just want to be clear that I do have some grammatical context. So we'll be coming to you probably early in the summer to talk about what kinds of legislation you would like to see sponsored in the next legislative session. We only have access to one, but our delegation has always been very generous if there are more that we wanted to see sponsored. I'm sure we could get a legislator to sponsor other issues that we'd like to see. So keep that on your radar, in the back of your mind, listening for things when you hear staff say, well, the law makes it do it this way. We always have the opportunity to revisit that in Carson City. Just a timeline, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the budget, really, the governor's budget is going to be developed over the summer. So it seems like a long time away, but really, a lot of that agency work is happening right now. So it's really important, we're communicating with this Department of Education, the governor's office, about what's working for us and what's not. Okay, and that's it. So I went really quickly. I'm happy to come back anytime or talk to any of you others that have more questions offline, but this is really important time for legislative work, even though it seems like it's a long time away. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. That was a great update and reminder of all the work that's still going on, and I think once we get the 20th on our calendars, if there's any other future opportunities, I think that commission is made up of, is it seven individuals?
The Commission on School Funding, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sorry.
I think it's more like 11. I don't know.
But there's only one individual from our district, from Washoe County, and that is our CFO, and so whatever we can do to help amplify his voice and the concerns up here in Washoe County against the rest of the state, we're happy to do that.
I think that's going to be very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. I know Lindsay was a little bit nervous about it being a very dry presentation, but it wasn't, and it's really important. It's very, very important. So thank you so much, Lindsay. Truly appreciate it.
Back to the beach.
Sure feet up.
You didn't bother much.
All right, we get to move on to a super exciting item right now. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 5.02, which is the presentation, excuse me, presentation to introduce the new colors and mascots for two new schools, John C. Bohatch Elementary School and Marcy Hurst Middle School. All right, so we're joined by Irene Payne, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, our new principal at Bohatch Elementary School, Heidi Gavrilis. Did I say it right? Okay, got it. Our new principal at Marcy Hurst Middle School, Brandon Bringhurst, and we have another guest with us that I'll let you introduce.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustees, interim superintendent McNeil. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, and I'm going to let my colleagues here introduce themselves.
Heidi Gavrilis, principal of Bohatch Elementary School.
Brandon Bringhurst, the principal at Marcy Hurst Middle School.
Victoria Miller, future parent of a child at Marcy Hurst Middle School.
So I think it goes without saying that this is exciting, and we're excited to be here. We're excited to unveil the mascots for the two new schools, which is Marcy Hurst Middle School and John C. Bohatch Elementary School. Before we actually do the unveiling, both principals are going to just share a little bit of the outreach that they did in order to get everybody's input, and then we'll unveil the mascots. So Heidi and I will go first, and then we'll hand over to Brandon and Victoria to talk about Marcy Hurst. So Heidi, over to you.
Thank you, Irene. President Raymond, trustees, and interim superintendent McNeil, I'm going to walk you through the Bohatch mascot process, which had five steps. Our first step was to gather ideas. So this was accomplished by putting out a public survey. This online survey was posted to the school website and distributed throughout the community. The initial survey was open, was an open question asking for suggestions, and the initial survey was open for 17 days, beginning on November 5th and ending on the 21st, and this generated 81 different ideas. Our second step was to create a mascot committee. The committee was composed of school staff, parents, and students. This committee meant to narrow down the 81 suggestions to a final four. The committee engaged in robust discussion and wanted to make sure that the school mascot would represent the legacy of our namesake, and also possibly be tied to our feeder school, Sky Ranch Middle School, especially because we share a property. We began by going through a list of current Washoe County school mascots, and then we removed duplicates from our suggestions list. We also removed suggestions that we felt as a committee were culturally insensitive, and those things that the committee thought were inappropriate for an elementary school. The committee also expressed a strong preference for native animals over non-native species. And the four finalists that were established were the Badgers, the Bears, the Bobcats, and the Nighthawks. The third step was to conduct a public vote. This vote was open for 11 days, beginning on November 22nd and ending on December 2nd. Over 600 votes were recorded in the online final survey, and Nighthawks received 250 votes, Badgers received 183, Bobcats received 71, and the Bears only received 52. I know. Our fourth step was that the committee take those final results of the online survey, work through it, and then each committee member had a final vote, and the committee voted eight to two to go with the popular choice of the Nighthawks. And the final step was actually the design phase, and we're going to get some more detail regarding that, but I would just like to say that it was a real honor to work with the communications team, and particularly with our graphic artist, Melissa. team and particularly with our graphic artist, Melissa Gillis. She did an extraordinary number of renderings based on my non-technical understanding of graphic arts. But I would like to note too, relating to when we reveal this image in just a few minutes here, that it was very important for the committee that we honor the legacy of our namesake, Officer John C. Bohatch. As a fallen officer in our, in our community, we felt like it was very important to visually represent his work and what he stood for in the logo, and you will see that in the We also felt like we wanted a strong figure that looked over our students, just as Officer Bohatch did for so many.
Okay. So are you ready? Okay, so here we go. So I'm, I'm pretty much going to read what Melissa told me to say. So as you can see, the colors that were selected are a leaf green and silver. And Melissa said silver's sometimes not always an option, so we also can use a light, cool gray as a suitable subject, as a suitable substitute. And the, the green is a really good contrast against the silver or the gray. And then the black, although it's not an official school color, it's super helpful to incorporate detail into the mascot. And Heidi was quite clear that she wanted a mascot, like you just said, that overlooked, you know, took care, looked over our students, but it was appropriate for an elementary school, but not too cartoony, not too juvenile. And she was very clear that she wanted to incorporate an image that represented police officers in deep respect to everything that Officer Bohatch did. So as you can see, there's, there's a shield behind our Nighthawk, and Melissa and Heidi worked together, went over a number of options, get, you know, refining it and refining it. And then we eventually, or they eventually came to this wonderful, wonderful mascot. And as you can see, there's an oblong option there, just gives the school some more options. And there you have it. It's beautiful, isn't it? And now I will hand over to Brandon and Victoria.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here, President Raymond and trustees and interim superintendent McNeil. Since being named the principal of Marcy Hurst Middle School, the most common question that I've been asked is, what's the mascot and what are the colors? So it's great to be here to, to finally have that finalized and be able to share that with everybody. We followed a similar process to what you heard from Bohatch. Oh, spoiler alert. So we started with gathering some input as well, gathering suggestions. We sent a survey out to the community. We had over 150 responses to that with different mascot suggestions. We also opened it up for individuals who wanted to be on our mascot committee. We had a mascot committee that was composed of parents, students, as well as myself on that committee. That committee got together and reviewed all of those mascot selections and narrowed those down to our four finalists, following some similar criteria to what Bohatch did. We eliminated some things that were duplicate mascots to other high schools and middle schools in particular around the district. And then we had a lot of discussion in the committee about things that would represent positive things for Marcy Hurst Middle School. And so we moved down to our four finalists, which were the Arctic Fox, the Bobcat, the Phoenix, and the Falcon. So we sent those four finalists out to a community vote. We had over 1,200 votes cast on our online survey. The committee met and then reviewed those, all of those votes, and had a lot of discussion about the results. Our, our results came in pretty close amongst our, our top couple of choices. So a few things that we really wanted to consider was also an animal that was native to the area, was something that was of interest to several of our members of the committee, as well as something that connected with Marcy Hurst and her history in this area. So the committee decided to go with the Marcy Hurst Middle School Falcons. Now you can show, Irene. So the, the Falcons has a great connection to Marcy Hurst. The junior ski program that she helped to found was, their race team was the Falcons for many, many years. And so it's a, a great connection to her and the great work she did in this community. As far as designing this logo, we were very fortunate to have Victoria Miller, as she mentioned. She is a parent of a future Marcy Hurst Middle School student. She was on our mascot selection committee. She volunteered to design the logo. She does this work professionally, has done so for 20 years for clients, including Disney, Nickelodeon, Warner Brothers, Simon &amp; Schuster, Random House, Mattel, just a couple of names you may have heard. So we went through a lot of back and forth, working on the design process to come up with a logo that we thought would positively represent the Marcy Hurst Falcons. And I'll let Victoria talk a little bit about her process.
Well, I want to start by telling you a fun fact. I'm a Reno native. I grew up here, and I went to Reno High. And at the time, when I was a student there, they wanted to retool their logo. And so they wanted all the students to participate, so I entered some of my designs in there. Sadly, they weren't the ones that were picked, but, you know, you never give up on a dream, right? All these years later. So my family just moved back to the Reno area. We've been living in Southern California for about 20 years, sick of the traffic and some of the other considerations. Missed the palm trees, but it's nice to be back home. Found out that there was a new middle school opening up. My son Race is going to attend, and they were looking for a mascot. I thought, this is my chance to redeem myself. So it was, I'm very, very happy and fortunate to work with Brandon as well. So we talked about some of the considerations, and as you noticed, the colors in there, originally, the colors for the school were supposed to be black and white. And over a couple of the, the different forms of the logo, we thought it'd be fun to have a color in there. And as you know, Marcy Hurst had a ski team named Falcons, and so we thought like a, a beautiful blue would kind of set that off, is like a nice icy blue color to represent the, the snowy background that she comes from. So this is the final result that we came up with, and I thought it would be fun to add in there how cool 2020 looks, and that's when the school's established.
And then the, the gifts just don't end. The principals have arranged, along with Melissa, phone boards for you all to have, so you can leave this evening with copies of both of these beautiful new mascots. So they're, they're over here, and we can just, you just pass them around. And then if anyone has got any questions, any of us would be very happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, sorry.
You, got it, okay. First of all, great job. This is really, really exciting. Great job, and how cool for you to get to design it, right? Coming back, that's really special. So the colors get, it's like icy blue? Help me understand the colors, because it isn't just like blue and white. It's just, it's got cool stuff to it. Well, how about the Falcons?
So our colors are blue and black.
Oh, blue and black, okay.
The white, you know, is not really a color.
Right.
That doesn't count.
Okay, okay, okay. And, and then for Bohatch, it's, we're calling it green and silver?
So, yeah, so it's a leaf green.
Leaf green.
A leaf green and silver with an option to do, to use a light, cool gray. And then the black is used as a contrast between the green and the gray and, and the silver, and those are the, you know, the respective Pantone numbers. And it's important, I sound like I know what I'm talking about here, Donna, and I really don't. I should really call Melissa up, but she'd hate me if I did, so I won't. But the Pantone references are very important because then it ensures consistency, and that's what you want with a brand, with a logo, you want that consistency. So people, soon as they look at the Falcons or the Nighthawks, they know exactly what school those images represent.
That's great.
Really exciting, and two new avian species for mascot. And interesting, too, the similar with the kind of medallion detail in the background from two different designers, the two different communities, not communicating, but with similar ideas. So that's really exciting, and just great work to everybody.
I just want to thank all of the school communities for jumping in, and, and as trustee Cottrell had said, that's a great, great number of surveys. And this is probably going to be the only presentation that I will absolutely say it's gone to the birds. I know, people were waiting. You guys were waiting. Somebody had to say it, so I just went ahead and did it. But thank you so very, very much. You guys did an awesome, awesome job. We're super excited.
All right. I, I know we have many people here ready to go and, and some public commenters, but we do need to take just a very brief break for the trustees' bathroom water break and come back for Agenda Item 5.08 after that. So I'll say 10 minutes, it's 5:45. We'll be back at 5:55 to start Agenda Item 5.08. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order, and we will begin with Agenda Item 5.08. We approved that earlier, that we would move that item up. And we have a number of individuals joining us for this presentation on the coordinated efforts between the Washoe County Health Department and Washoe County School District in handling health-related outbreaks occurring in schools. We're joined by Victor Sherbandi, I see, Margaret Allen, our Director of Health Services, and Kevin Dick, the, from the district health office, and I know others. I will let you all take care of the introductions. I'd like to begin by just saying we'll go through the presentation, and then I do know there is some public comment on this item. We'll, once the presentation's completed, we'll take public comment, and then we'll open it up for the board to have any further discussion. This is an information, discussion, and presentation item, only not an action item. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, President Raymond. Good evening, Vice President Taylor, interim superintendent McNeil, members of the board. For the record, Victor Sherbandi, Executive Director, Strategies Office. We do have a joint presentation, as President Raymond just pointed out for you tonight, from members of the district's Health Services Department and the Washoe County Health District to discuss how we support and handle health-related outbreaks occurring in our schools. Our primary presenters this evening up in front are Kevin Dick, who is the Washoe County District Health Officer, Dr. Randall Todd, Division Director of Epidemiology and Public Health, and Heather Kirwin, who is the Epidemiology Program Manager, and of course, Margaret Allen, our Director of Health Services. In the audience, there are other experts that helped work on this presentation, and they are ready and willing to answer questions if there are questions by the trustees this evening. That includes Charlie Hoppy, Washoe County School District Facilities Management and Housekeeping Director, Dr. Jeff Brassel, who is the Senior Environmental Health Specialist from the Washoe County School, or Washoe County Health District. We have Michelle Sporopoulos, who is the Washoe County School District Facilities Management Assistant Director of Housekeeping Operations. We have Megan Downs, Washoe County School District Communications Manager, Jennifer Crane, the Assistant Director of our district's Health Services, and Mari Hartman, the Clinical Director of Health Services. Thank you.
I want to thank you for the introduction, and thanks for inviting us to present this evening. I'm Kevin Dick, District Health Officer for the Washoe County Health District, and I want to express my appreciation for the fantastic staff that the Washoe County School District has. When we are, we become aware of an outbreak, it's a fast-paced situation. We want to react and respond as quickly as possible to try to stop the, the spread of that disease. If we don't act immediately, and there are time delays, then there's more and more spread of the, the disease, exponential increase in, in that in our community, and it becomes much more difficult to control, much more resource-intensive for both the Health District and the School District. So we appreciate the partnership and the team environment that occurs in that fast-paced response that, that we take to outbreaks as they occur. I wanted to talk about some of the keys to disease prevention, and first and foremost, vaccinations. Vaccinations, there's a overwhelming scientific consensus on the efficacy of vaccines for preventing disease in individuals, but more importantly, for us public health professionals, preventing the spread of disease within our communities. And so that's really our focus, is how do we contain these diseases and, and prevent them from spreading in our community? So obviously, when we have a, a disease outbreak in a school, the first place we respond is in that school environment to, to prevent the spread. Hygiene and sanitation are also very important factors. These are the only factors that we have for some diseases for which we don't have vaccinations available, but we also depend on hygiene and sanitation, the cleaning that occurs in the schools, school buses, et cetera, as important tools to, to prevent the spread of the disease, diseases. With the coronavirus outbreak that we see now occurring, that's the only option that we have right now to try to prevent the, the spread of that disease. And so that's an example, when you see what's happening in China and the potential threat to, to the rest of the world, of how important vaccines are for us to give us another tool. The, the next key is early disease detection and reporting. So as I mentioned, we need to respond quickly. There are reporting requirements, and Dr. Todd will be speaking about those, as well as the disease investigation that occurs to control outbreaks that, that occur in our community. And then when we do have an outbreak, that response, working as a, as a team to try to prevent any further spread. All of these are helped by tools that we have through Nevada State Law. And NRS 392 is an important piece of our law that requires the, requires vaccinations of students attending our schools, and it also provides for exemptions, both religious exemptions and medical exemptions, from those vaccination requirements. Dr. Todd is going to also show you a bar chart that shows over the past 10 years the type of outbreaks that have occurred in the schools. And you'll notice there that pertussis, the, the recent outbreak that we had in a couple of high schools in our community, was the first outbreak in that 10-year period of a disease for which vaccinations are required for school entry. And so I think that provides you with some indication of the effectiveness of that vaccine requirement in helping to prevent outbreaks of those vaccine-preventable diseases in the schools. The NRS 392 also has a requirement for children that are claiming exemptions, or students claiming exemptions during disease outbreaks, that those children be excluded. And so that's under NRS 392-446, and it makes it the responsibility of the school board or a charter, governing body of a charter school, to exclude those children. If the child is, unless the child is immunized, the child remain outside the school environment and the local health authority be notified. So I apologize, on this slide, I have a typo. I looked at this a dozen times until I saw it yesterday. It's NRS 441 is the other important statute on this, and that one identifies the reportable diseases, so what needs to be reported to the Health District. And it also provides for the responsibility of the Health District. the Health District to work with the School District on school outbreaks. And it provides us with the authority to provide direction to the School District on how to respond to that outbreak. So the legal structure that we have is really a shared responsibility between the School Board of Trustees and the District Board of Health in addressing these outbreaks that occur within the school environment. So, you know, recently, we had an outbreak that occurred within the public school for pertussis at Damone Ranch. We also had one in a private school at Bishop Minogue. And so just as a, as an aside, there is an NRS 395 that addresses private schools similarly to the requirements for, for public schools. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Todd.
Here we go. Good afternoon. So I want to talk a little bit about communicable disease reporting. How do we, how do we learn of, of a communicable disease? There are probably about 70-plus different communicable diseases that are reportable by law in Nevada, and that's fairly typical among the states. But you might, you might think, well, who does this reporting? Or you might wonder, who does the reporting? And you'd probably, if I asked you to guess, you'd probably guess doctors have to do the reporting. And you'd be correct, doctors are required to report if they diagnose or even suspect one of these reportable conditions, they're required to report it to us. But if you read the actual law in NRS 441A, it says anyone with knowledge of a reportable condition is required to report. So that means doctors, nurses, teachers, anybody that has knowledge that there is a reportable condition is required to report that to the Health District. Now, we don't get all that many that aren't physicians, but we do occasionally get them. So you might wonder then, well, if I'm required to report, if I have knowledge of a, of a reportable condition, I'm required to report that, how would I do that? Well, it's actually pretty easy. Here in Washoe County, we have a 24/7 telephone line. It's staffed during the daytime. And in the evenings and on weekends, we have an answering service that would pick it up and they would relay the information to one of us on staff. So that 328-2447 number gets answered 24/7. And then the, the other question you might wonder is, well, how quickly would I have to report that? And the answer is as soon as possible. So what do we do once, once it gets reported to us? Well, we have to confirm, we have to confirm the diagnosis and begin to conduct case contact investigation. And we will try to find high-risk contacts. We'll conduct prophylaxis or treatment as recommended. We'll be trying to prevent the spread of the disease and reduce the risk to vulnerable populations. And this process varies depending on the disease. So actually, for each of these 60 or 70, 70-plus reportable conditions, if you were to read the actual chapter of NRS and NAC 441A, you would see the disease listed and it would, it would then list out the specific steps that we're required to take in order to control that. So it varies depending on the disease. As Mr. Dick mentioned a moment ago, not every disease has a vaccine. So for some, the steps would be to vaccinate, and for others, it would be to take other hygienic measures to control the further spread. So the Washoe County Health District, we, we used to have access to the Student Absenteeism Monitoring System, or SAMs, here at the School District. And this allowed us to actively monitor what was going on. As, as students would become ill with a reportable condition, it would go into SAMs and we'd be able to monitor that. We utilize that SAM's baseline data to create a threshold for detecting outbreaks at, at the school level and an algorithm to, to control such an outbreak. A couple of three years ago, that, that process got discontinued. And we've been recently working with School District personnel to see if we can't get that restored because it was very helpful. We actually created an algorithm that the school, school personnel could use to decide when they needed to take certain specific actions. This went through a number of revisions until we got it to where we thought it was nearly perfect. And we got good feedback on it. And unfortunately, it's now out of date because the, the raw data that goes into that algorithm was coming from SAMs. And we no longer have, have access to that. So we're hopeful that we'll get that restored fairly soon. This next slide shows you the percentage of outbreaks in schools by year. And as you can see, some years, we have a lot more than others. That red line is the average. And so some years, schools are considerably above the average and in, in some of the years, they're below the average. You can see that in 2019, nearly half of the outbreaks were in schools. Half of the outbreaks in Washoe County were in schools. So that's important. And the next slide, last one that I'm going to talk about, shows you the number of outbreaks by disease. And you'll see that we have the yellowish bars there are ILI, that's influenza-like illness. And the red bars are for gastrointestinal illness. The blue bars are for other. And you'll see that on one of the years, specifically 2019, there's a green bar, and that's the pertussis situation that we had. So that was pretty new. We hadn't seen pertussis outbreaks in schools for a number of years, but we did see it in 2019. So the, the other category that is represented by the blue bars, that would include things like varicella, herpes, head lice, hand, foot and mouth disease, pink eye, and fifth disease. So we do see those other, other conditions happening in schools from time to time, but not at nearly the high level that we see for influenza-like illness and for gastrointestinal illness. I'd say the majority of the GI illness is norovirus, but it's not always norovirus. So that's kind of what's, what's been going on in schools. And I'm going to turn it over to Heather to talk about, or what we do with outbreaks.
So this slide will frustrate some of you who would like the black and white on what constitutes as an outbreak. But as you've heard, with over 70 reportable conditions, each of those diseases has a certain threshold at which we would consider an outbreak. There's two kind of case criteria that we can look at, and one is defining an outbreak as more than the expected number of cases. Well, for something like measles, we would expect to see zero cases. So one single case could constitute as an outbreak. And for example, when we did have a positive case linked to an outbreak related in California, it took over 200 phone calls and case follow-ups. And so even just with one case, you can see how an outbreak with one case can lead to a lot of backend work on our line staff. Another definition that we use to define an outbreak is more than one epilinked case occurring within two incubation periods. And I'll go into what an incubation period is in a little more detail on the following slide. But it is the time in which you are exposed to something until you develop symptoms for that organism. So it's that time when you are actively becoming sick before you start coughing or experiencing fever or something to that knowledge where it might trigger you, oh, I'm, I'm not feeling well, I have something. So that's the incubation period. The exclusion criteria are, generally speaking, is two incubation periods because we like to make sure that we haven't missed any cases, there aren't huge delays in reporting, and that we've cleared for one and then cleared for a second, and then we can close that outbreak. The criteria for excluding is dependent upon whether or not the vaccine is available for that particular outbreak, or if there are antibiotics particular for that, for that organism, or if it's just a, you know, resolution of symptoms and then you can come back after 24 hours. There are some reportable conditions in which you need to get additional lab testing to verify that you have two negative tests before you are cleared to even return back to your profession, depending on what that profession may be. So again, highly dependent on the organism that is identified causing the outbreak. When we do open an outbreak, we do require reporting of lineless to determine, help determine our epidemiologic curve. So this shows us exactly how quickly and can sometimes in the absence of knowing the organism that causes this outbreak, it can, depending on what that epidemiologic curve looks like, sometimes lead us in the right direction as to we think it's one of these three. So we're going to point, you know, our laboratory technicians or staff to try and test for one of those three and narrow it down. And it also helps us monitor the progression of disease. And so we know when we're, we're getting close to being able to close an outbreak as well. So this is sort of a complicated diagram, but this is why you have epidemiologists, so that we spend our time counting, not only data, but infectious periods. So this chart is read from the bottom up. You have an exposure with your initial patient. They have a latent period and an incubation period. In certain diseases such as measles, you can actually be infectious before you start illustrating signs of, and symptoms of illness. And so there's certain diseases which raise a lot of red flags for us, where other ones may not, where you may only be considered to be infectious while you're exhibiting symptoms. So you can see here that bottom, bottom chart is showing one where you may be considered infectious period after, after the infection there. And then you can then transmit, and that's showing that second box above it, where the person you may have had an exposure as a second patient, not know it, you also go through that incubation, that latent period, then you're demonstrating infection and becoming infectious yourself. And this can happen rather quickly, as I'm sure you have either unfortunately experienced personally or seen in the news. Specific to pertussis, the incubation period is generally seven to 10 days, but it can range anywhere from four to 21 full days. So this one's a frustrating one because it has such a long incubation period. So in order to close and clear an outbreak, you do have to wait the full 42 days for those two incubation periods to pass. The symptoms include, it used to be called the 100-day cough. So it can lead to a duration in cough for, for over three months. But the first two weeks are categorized by what appears to be just kind of mild upper respiratory infection. You have an intermittent nonproductive cough. You think, oh, maybe it's allergies, maybe it's something else, I'm not really sure yet. Those next following two weeks, from the two-week to the three-week phase and sometimes longer, is where you see those paroxysmal coughs. And that's where pertussis gets its more commonly known name of whooping cough. And so that's where people are coughing so hard, they sometimes experience what we call postussive vomiting. They have in, an incredible gasp, an inhalation of air. And unfortunately, with infants, they don't display these common symptoms as readily. They actually have apnea, experience apnea where they just stop breathing. And so this is why we consider pertussis to be very, very dangerous, especially for infants. So that is a concerning, you know, delineation to make here when I'm talking through the phases of infection. And then you see that convalescent stage. After you're coughing for about three to four weeks, you, in certain circumstances, you're not necessarily considered to be passing bacteria actively, but that bacteria creates a toxin in your lungs, and that's what continues your cough for up to a full 12-week cycle. So it's that agitative toxin that's created by the bordetella pertussis bacteria itself that causes an ongoing and elongated cough. For treatment, it's most effective if you test and treat by week three of the cough. We do make some exceptions, and this is best practice nationally, it's not our exceptions, for high-risk persons who may be treated through week six of cough. And again, this is pregnant women for the reason that they are to be expecting, as well as infants. So those who cannot receive immunizations, necessarily the full dose of immunizations, and, and because they may not display that traditional cough inhalation, the deep whoop that you get with whooping cough, we, we do like to, to treat those populations through week six. It's considered that you are no longer infectious after five days of antibiotic treatment. And you may not, like I said, necessarily feel better and stop coughing completely, but always finish your medication. Moving on to this particular, two pertussis outbreaks, the criteria for action is two cases within a school setting. So this is unique where you may have a case in one school and may have a case in another school, and you later find out those cases had contact outside of their school settings. So this is where that case follow-up becomes really important. Fortunately, we've not had that particular circumstance occur to alert us to an outbreak involving two separate institutions, but that's where we look at where these outbreaks and exposures are occurring and what kind of shared time they may have had outside of the institution. In terms of data access, so when we receive an outbreak notification, generally in our schools, we work really closely with our student health services staff, and they are great in communicating back and forth. As Mr. Dick explained earlier, we're greatly appreciative for the open communication that we've had with them. We sometimes often learn of cases through laboratories as well, and there is a built-in delay there. So sometimes when we see a lab report, it takes a first phone call to that patient, to that family or to that doctor to find out, oh, you know, this student was in school during, when they were infectious. And then we'll start working with student health services that way. So it really is unique in the way that we find out about these cases and in what ways we then communicate with student health services to initiate and determine the criteria for an outbreak. So just for clarification, we at the Health District do not have access to infinite campus. This is solely on the side of student health services. We rely on a software system called WebIZ, and that's where healthcare providers will actually input all vaccine information, or they're supposed to put all vaccine information for any patient that they see into that system. So we have almost a lifetime ability to kind of go in there and look and see, take the, the burden off of people to recall when and where and how and which vaccines they have. So we work together, again, with student health services to make sure that, that those records are in alignment. On the notification to Washoe County Health District, I kind of talked about that a little bit earlier on in this slide, and it really just is dependent upon how we first find out about that case. And then depending, again, on the disease, but specific to pertussis, you know, we can look at it from a classroom basis, and it would depend if it's in an elementary school versus a middle school and high school, where in a month, in an elementary school, you have known durations of when and where these kids were within the setting. Normally, they're not switching back and forth between classrooms, but in middle schools and high schools, it becomes much more difficult to really put a timeframe around, you know, a room that was exposed. And then we have to look at all the other opportunities for exposure that happen in a greater school setting where they are switching, they're communing through the hallways together during those class periods, and it makes it a little bit more difficult. And then we have an ongoing daily communication as well. And I, I believe, from our perspective, it seems to be working, working well, but I would, I would look to Margaret to jump in at any of that in terms of this, if you have anything to slide, on this slide.
Margaret Allen, for the record. The communication was really good. It was a lot of people looking up a lot of records. And we did our best with what we had, something out of the ordinary.
And so I asked one of our staff to, to calculate what we in epidemiology world call an attack rate. And this is where the numbers make sense. When someone says, oh, look at the total number of people who had, who got disease XYZ, or for this, we'll look specifically to these two pertussis outbreaks. This is data that combines Damone Ranch High School's population, as well as Bishop Minogue's population. And so what you're looking at is the attack rate between vaccinated and unvaccinated students. So instead of just looking at your pool of students who test positive and are confirmed to have pertussis, you split the pool into two populations and two denominators, and you look at your total denominator of unvaccinated students versus your total denominator of vaccinated students, and how many of those became confirmed case of pertussis. So if you look at the table on your left, you have total number of vaccinated students between those two schools at 2,440. Among those, only 11 tested positives confirmed cases for pertussis, which is an attack rate about 45%. If you want to look at a ratio, it's less than 1.45%, sorry. And if you look at the ratio, tired eyes and a long day, that would be less than one case in 2,000. If you look on the right side, you'll see that the total number of unvaccinated students is being 25, and two unvaccinated students were confirmed cases of pertussis. So we're looking at an attack rate among our unvaccinated students of 8%. Or if you want to look at an, a ratio, that's 16 in 200. So you have almost, almost more than about 17 times rate higher of getting pertussis if you're unvaccinated versus vaccinated. So if that helps break down those numbers, when you look at the total pool and you say, oh, well, more of the, the total cases were vaccinated oh, well, more of the total cases were vaccinated, it's really more appropriate to look at those in two separate pools and look at your actual risk of exposure as well in conjunction with These next two slides are quite difficult to see, but I really, the takeaway point on this, these are our epidemiologic curves for these two pertussis outbreaks. And so this first one here is with Bishop Minogue, and you can see why it's important to clear it for as long as we did in terms of the incubation period, being that 42 days, because you see how there's kind of gaps in new cases, and then you see these smaller clusters of bars together, meaning that those were diagnosis dates of new, or illness onset dates of new cases. And we did not learn of the outbreak until almost, I haven't counted the lines, but you'll see the box there calling to attention, it's in the middle there, when the outbreak was detected on 10/21. Yep. But you can see how many cases were occurring prior to that and then after that. And here, we caught it a little bit sooner, but you can see how the trickle of cases due to effective practices, cleaning is huge in these schools. We can't emphasize that enough, and a huge thanks to those staff who go in and do that. It's especially unpleasant with R G I illnesses. But here, we can see also a drop-off there. And with that, I will hand it over.
So what student health services does, again, we're in communication with the Health District almost on a daily basis. Sometimes a nurse will call us and say, you know, I'm just not sure about this case. They have the bigger picture of the community. And so while we might have one case, they may have other pockets of stuff going on. So we do, once they direct us that we have an outbreak, then we notify our Washoe County School District outbreak team. If we need to review Web I Z, we start that process, or we start reviewing Infinite Campus. Environmental Services Department is notified, and then there's ongoing communication between our leadership team and the Health District. If it's decided that we have to send letters or communicate to parents, then that information pulls in another department, which is our Communications Department. So it really is a team effort. This next slide was prepared by Megan from our Communications Team. The Washoe County School District protocol is that we keep that close communication with their Public Information Officer. Our Communications Team and theirs decide who is going to give a media interview to talk about it. Sometimes it's them, and sometimes it's us. Once an outbreak is declared, we have dissemination of a principal's toolkit, and you'll see those letters go to the principal saying, I understand you have X outbreak, here's your toolkit. They do connect ed messages, letters are sent home, and then, you know, hand-washing posters. All messaging is in English and Spanish. And then depending on the severity of the issue, ongoing messaging to the schools, social media monitoring, and media coordination with the Health District. There are so many ways to, for news to be spread. You know, during the pertussis outbreak, we had coaches that were playing a game that night calling, you know, and so we were trying to get our hands around this. There was just so many areas for communication to go, and there was some miscommunication as well. This next slide was prepared by Charlie Hoppy and Michelle Sporopoulos for cleaning protocols. The process cleaning for health guidelines are followed using a bleach solution with additional cleaning in Kinder and Pre-K. Those kids are just little Petri dishes. They touch everything. The solution is a half a cup of bleach to a gallon of water and is used each night at the outbreak site. Michelle's team is awesome. They are on it immediately. Sometimes even, you know, her and Jen may be texting before Jen has sent the letter out for the outbreak team, so that she knows early. Kinder and Pre-K are completely wiped down to include toys, walls, books, high-touch areas in all the schools. During the school day, again, high-touch areas are cleaned as needed. Sometimes we're talking to teachers and principals because they want to go the extra effort. After the pertussis outbreak, we, the Board of Trustees, you know, got some public comment, and that's when then-President Katie Simon-Holland asked us to do a presentation on exactly what our process was. We felt that communication needed to be improved. That was comments from parents, a lot of parents of unvaccinated students, questions about exclusion of students and plan for communication of education needs. We actually got a copy of something that was really interesting from a district in Washington that just talked about the need for student support protocols. The Health District and the School District got together, and we talked about, you know, some of the issues that we had during this outbreak. We had unvaccinated students and teachers that were excluded. I think Kristin was trying to get her arms around what is going on here, because we started excluding teachers. And then we had substitute teachers coming in. We had Bren Lapenta stationed herself at the school, you know, her and the school nurse and clinic aide were going through Web I Z. We were trying to find out who's, you know, been immunized, who needs to be. H R got involved, and we had some clinics that were just fantastic. I think everybody just pitched in and did what they could. We had people, you know, concerned about attendance, my child's being out for so long. Athletics was an issue, we had sports going on. People were spread across the state and, you know, communicating on a daily basis, what do we need to do to get a handle on this? There was times we were making daily calls, you know, every hour to the Health District, saying, okay, now we have this situation, what is your recommendation? We had notification to parents via phone calls, letters. Letters were delivered to the school. We are in ongoing meetings with the Health District to decide what is the best way to communicate. We have this great, you know, way to connect with parents through Connect Ed. And so we're looking at that and saying, is this the best way? You know, will letters get there late? Will they not get there? Do we have the right address? So there's just a lot of communication going on. Again, media communication. Who's going to do the interview? Who is going to talk about this? We did hear concerns from parents about feeder schools. Well, what about, you know, my son's excluded at the high school, but, you know, the rest of the kids go to the middle school. And then there was questions about the length of time. We were constantly in touch with the Health District, looking at, did they have another case? You know, and everybody was just, you know, keeping their fingers crossed. And then concern from parents who chose not to vaccinate, public comment at the board meeting, we talked about that, and then special education considerations. Again, there's probably some things we could have done better. We felt like we handled it the best that we could. Tried to make sure that parents were staying engaged with the school staff, even though there were substitute teachers going on. And then trying to help everybody understand the criteria. I think that was the most difficult part, is, okay, you're excluded for 21 days, and your 21 days are up, but they found another case. And, you know, so the calendar, the clock kept ticking. And so, again, debriefing was really important in this case because it affected so many people, and it is just dependent on the outbreak. We're not debriefing usually on gastrointestinal or, you know, things like that unless the Health District starts, you know, seeing it widespread. So with that, that is the presentation you asked for. You got it, and we're here for questions.
Great. Well, as I mentioned, I think we will then, at this point, take public comment, and then we'll come back to the board for questions and comments on this end.
Susan Sorenson.
My name is Dr. Susan Sorenson. I'm a pediatrician here in Reno. I've been practicing pediatrics for over 20 years. Unfortunately, in those 20, unfortunately, in those years, I've seen deaths from vaccine-preventable illnesses. One that, one episode that sticks out in my mind is an infant that was on the ventilator in the pediatric intensive care unit for probably at least four months with pertussis, an infant that was unable to be immunized. Fortunately, in that 20 years, I have not seen any complications or harm from vaccines. On a personal level, sadly, I've experienced the pain as a mother of a child with a chronic disease. Treatment to keep him healthy has unfortunately the side effects of making him immunosuppressed, definitely putting him at increased risk in situations of both contracting these diseases and unfortunately increasing the risk of severe disease. I firmly believe that this is a public health issue, not a personal decision, and I'm glad to see that it was taken so seriously. Thank you.
Teri Sheridan.
Madam President, Board Members, the kids who are excluded from school this past December were kids who were healthy. They didn't have an infection. They were kicked out of school for over 21 days because their peers had received injections of a liability-free pharmaceutical product that is not designed or capable of preventing them from cultivating pertussis or spreading it. The latest research shows that the acellular pertussis vaccine is potentially capable of preventing the person injected from getting severe symptoms. But this doesn't mean that anyone else is protected from becoming infected with pertussis because of their peer's vaccination status. The DTAP shot should no longer be required for school attendance, and no one should, and no one who has not been injected with this vaccine should be excluded from school as a matter of policy. The vaccine should be an optional prophylactic that parents are made aware may only potentially lessen symptoms of whooping cough, but will not stop the injected person from cultivating or spreading whooping cough. Parents who choose to use the DTAP vaccine should be made aware that the latest research demonstrates that the acellular pertussis vaccine will make their children's immune systems more likely to get pertussis repeatedly throughout their lives. How many times will the fully vaccinated force their unvaccinated peers out of school? How many times will the unvaccinated have to leave school, not of their own will, but because of a policy that is not founded in good science or ethics? In Texas, multiple children caught whooping cough at a school with 100% vaccination rate. In L A, about 50 fully vaccinated kids got whooping cough while their unvaccinated peers were uninfected by the outbreak. It is clear from both observation and by peer-reviewed scientific literature that the acellular pertussis vaccine is not perfectly effective at preventing whooping cough. It is also not a drug that can be assumed to prevent the spread of the infection. We call upon the Washoe County Health Department to be responsive to the latest research on this vaccine and stop the policy of excluding healthy children from school whenever there is an outbreak of pertussis. This is an active discrimination. Thank you.
Deborah Lamam.
Madam President and Board Members, my name is Deborah Lamam. I represent Health Freedom Nevada. I have worked as a special ed paraprofessional in strategies and autism in Washoe County School District since 2002. My job means a lot to me. I do my best to stay healthy so I can show up at work each day with my patience and my compassion intact. When I read the emails from the superintendent and from Human Resources regarding how the pertussis outbreak would be handled, I realized that should the infection emerge in my school, I would probably not run out to get a DTAP to avoid exclusion. I have read too much recent science documenting outbreaks that are occurring in fully vaccinated populations worldwide. The shot is not working well at all. In addition, there are no placebo studies which absolve this vaccine of risk for unintended consequences. So I spent the next month stressing over the possible scenario of my having not to show up at my job for maybe weeks, using my own sick time to be paid, which would leave the teacher I work with alone to manage some high-power kiddos with autism in a small classroom. Thus far, there never has been a sub for me. I try not to be absent unless something of utmost importance comes up. It disturbs me that the district would send out the statement that, quote, "Older children and adults, including pregnant women, should get a pertussis booster shot called DTAP to protect themselves and infants near or around them," end of quote. The shot has not been tested on pregnant women. And as the district knows, vaccinated individuals can become infected and may be asymptomatic or have reduced symptoms, and therefore may themselves become vectors of infection to infants and everyone else. Why is the district strongly encouraging employees like me to get a shot, which is so obviously not working? And in the same email, the district was also encouraging us all to get the flu shot, which is also not very effective. The district's communications to parents neglected to present the accurate picture. The children being the DTAP, being given the DTAP may still contract whooping cough. I have spoken to a number of parents, as well as adults, who are of the belief that the shot is an absolute protection from infection. I have seen some of them send their kiddos to school with terrible coughs, never going to a doctor to have them tested, believing that they could not possibly have pertussis because they had the shot. You can be sure that this misunderstanding serves only to spread infection at school and elsewhere. The exclusion protocol must be reconsidered seriously in the light of the most up-to-date research regarding the efficacy and safety of the DTAP vaccination or lack thereof. It does not in any way help exempted students or their opting-out educators to be singled out and stressed out. For what? Getting a shot that doesn't protect them? Taking into account the obvious lack of efficacy? I urge you to reconsider the policy. Thank you.
Katania Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President and Trustees. Tried to switch my speech up a little bit today because I thought I'd be speaking first. I have a couple of questions that I will be addressing back to the Health Department, but I wanted to, what I wanted to hear tonight was a bold investigation as to whether or not excluding healthy children from school for infections such as pertussis is a policy that stands up to current science and the data that we have in front of us. So a couple of the points that I'd like to bring up today are that there are extremely good data, particularly with pertussis. There are studies, recent studies, 2014, the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences of America published a non-human primate study model showing that the pertussis vaccine, the DTAP, does not protect against the spread of the disease. All it does is suppress the symptoms, and they even mention in this article that cocooning, which is where we vaccinate people to protect those that are less protected or not fully vaccinated, like infants, that cocooning may not be effective since we are simply suppressing the symptoms of the disease and not preventing the spread of it. Another really important study in March of 2019 is the Oxford Pediatrics Study. This is Oxford Pediatrics, showing that the DTAP vaccine is actually making recipients of the vaccine more susceptible to pertussis for life, and they see no way of going back on this. You know, we're comparing the DTAP to the whole cell pertussis vaccine, as I'm sure my colleagues over here know well, and I know that the CDC and the FDA are also looking at going back to the whole cell pertussis vaccine because the DTAP, the current one, is not working. So one of the big problems is that we have students going to school thinking they're protected by the DTAP vaccine, fully protected by the CDC schedule, and yet, if these studies are showing true, we are suppressing symptoms, so they're going to school not even knowing they're sick, spreading the disease, not knowing they're sick. While the unvaccinated are completely kicked out of school, no matter whether they're healthy or not. So I'm curious as to how this policy is actually preventing the spread of the disease if the fully vaccinated children are going to school, possibly with suppressed symptoms. If we're using symptoms to ask children not to come to school or to go home in order to prevent the spread of the disease, how are we going to be relying on symptoms when the vaccine is suppressing symptoms? So that would be a big question that I have. Again, these studies show that unvaccinated children are no more susceptible to pertussis, and they are no more a risk of spreading the disease. And I would like to finally point out the plethora of outbreaks recently across this country that are in 100% vaccinated people. Texas, Florida, Bishop Minogue was three-quarters fully vaccinated, Demone Ranch was 100% fully vaccinated, four children fully vaccinated, not one unvaccinated that I know of, and I did a lot of research on this. So thank you very much. I'd really love, you know, some of these questions to be answered tonight. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Does anyone know -- do we still have people in the overflow room? Okay.
I would like the school exclusion policy to be removed. It is unfair and unscientific. I would like to hear how it can work when the fully vaccinated are getting and spreading pertussis at higher rates than the unvaccinated. The wrong group is being singled out. If the vaccine only works to suppress the symptoms of pertussis but not prevent the spread, then how does a policy that relies on symptoms send a child home even -- send a child home even work? Sorry. And that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Jose Cucalo, Cucalan?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Vanessa Slots. I am a general pediatrician. I'm also the Division Chair for General Pediatrics and Adolescent Medicine at Renowned Children's Hospital, and I am the Vice President for the Nevada Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I am here to speak unequivocally in the support of vaccination. Provider and parents truly are on the same page, and I think that's something that we forget. We are really here to talk about what is best for the children of our community, for their health and well-being. And one of our pillars for providing the best evidence-based care is vaccination. We do know, and this is one of the things that has come up a lot tonight, is that vaccines are highly effective at preventing invasive disease. And I think that's where people kind of lose sight of what vaccinations are for. Invasive disease means causing severe hospital -- or severe morbidity and mortality that could require hospitalization and could potentially lead to death. And when we are talking about vaccinations such as diarrhea, tetanus, pertussis, measles, mumps, rubella, hemophilus influenzae type B, vaccines have shown to decrease morbidity at 95 to 100%. These vaccinations are effective against preventing invasive disease. This means providers like myself fortunately have never seen a case of hemophilus influenzae type B meningitis, which used to fill every single bed in a PICU for months on end. And to speak also to Dr. Sorenson's comment of having a baby that was on a ventilator for over four months, I have luckily never had to see something like that. I have seen babies that have had to be admitted because they were not able to be vaccinated and they were on oxygen and support for weeks on end, however, because they were not able to receive those vaccinations. The mortality associated with these illnesses is also virtually nonexistent in children who are vaccinated, which is why we are so protective of those children who are unable to be vaccinated, and that unfortunately also includes those people who have chosen to not be vaccinated. We are trying to protect your children from getting invasive disease that could lead to significant morbidity and mortality. Many of these vaccine-preventable diseases are low in the United States, thank goodness, but are starting to climb as unvaccinated rates increase. And also, as these diseases are just a plane of flight away, these are not gone in most of the countries in the world, and they are very close to us on a more personal level, and it's even more imperative that children receive their vaccines in full and on time in accordance with the CDC schedule. Dr. Cucalan did have to step away, but he did leave some pro comments, as well as Dr. Kimiko Ishibashi, who also wrote a letter because she was not able to be here, so I'll submit those. Thank you.
Hi, Carissa Hoover. I'm a Washoe County School District teacher. To exclude students from school who have not had the pertussis vaccine is an outdated practice that is not supported by current science. These excluded students are healthy and pose no more of a risk to the student population than their vaccinated peers. Basically, the vaccine doesn't do what we want it to do, which is prevent the spread of the infection. Epidemiological evidence of recent outbreaks shows that most outbreaks across the country are in fully vaccinated, including the cases here in our district. Obviously, after tonight, you know that you can still get pertussis even if you are vaccinated and you can still spread it to others. Also, if you are vaccinated, you can get pertussis and show little to no symptoms. So, you'd think that, oh, that's a great thing, right? Well, wrong. This means that you aren't going home sick, you're staying in school, staying in work, spreading the pertussis to others. The science refers to this as being an asymptomatic carrier. A research study was conducted in 2012 titled "Comparison of Three Whole Cell Pertussis Vaccines in the Baboon Model of Pertussis" and published in 2016 in Clinical and Vaccine Immunology. It concluded that, quote, "There was no difference in either the duration or in B pertussis burden between unvaccinated and acellular pertussis vaccinated animals," end quote. It then goes on to add that, quote, "DTAP vaccination did not prevent B pertussis colonization or transmission to unvaccinated contacts." If true in humans, these data suggests that people vaccinated with acellular pertussis vaccines can become asymptomatic infected with B pertussis and act as a reservoir for circulation within communities, end quote. What is even worse is according to the article "The 112-Year Odyssey of Pertussis and Pertussis Vaccines: Mistakes Made and Implications for the Future," published in 2019 in the Journal of Pediatric Infectious Diseases Society, quote, "All children who were primed by DTAP vaccines were more susceptible to pertussis throughout their lifetimes, and there is no easy way to decrease this increased lifetime susceptibility," end quote. Since I'm a district employee, I was getting all those emails about the pertussis vaccine clinics. The emails implied that everyone needs to get vaccinated and boosted, and if they do, they won't get pertussis. Nowhere in the emails did it state that the pertussis cases were in the fully vaccinated, that even if you get the vaccine, you can still contract pertussis, that if you get the vaccine, you can still be an asymptomatic carrier, or that if you get vaccinated, you are more susceptible to catching the very thing you are vaccinating against. With the knowledge that fully vaccinated students are the primary ones getting pertussis and that they can be asymptomatic carriers and still spread the infection, then why are healthy, unvaccinated students the one being excluded? How is this policy of excluding healthy students from school reducing the spread of pertussis in schools? Why aren't we making policies that are based on current science and research? Our policy must be reassessed and changed to keep up with current research. I know that our district is ready to be innovative with our policies rather than the outdated status quo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. McNeil, and School District Board Members and Staff. My name is Sarah Yelowitz, and I'm a parent of school-aged children in Washoe County. I'm also one of the Board Members of Health Freedom Nevada. Thank you all for being responsive to our concerns about the excessive and unnecessary school exclusions. Over and over again, the latest science is showing that the pertussis vaccine does not prevent the spread of pertussis. Not only are vaccinated individuals more likely to contract pertussis, they are also more likely to spread it since the vaccine can cause people to become asymptomatic carriers. Excluding healthy, exempted students and teachers from school offers no benefit to public health. If the concern is truly only for the well-being of the exempted students, then the decision to remain out of school should be completely voluntary. It is important to note that some states, such as Maine and Michigan, no longer exclude exempted students during pertussis outbreaks because the health authorities in those states have acknowledged how ineffective the pertussis vaccine is. I'm glad you're taking the time to consider updating the policy, and I hope that the new guidelines will take into account the most current studies regarding the significant failures of the pertussis vaccine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jared Buscher, and I am the Associate Director with the Children's Advocacy Alliance. The Children's Advocacy Alliance is a statewide nonprofit that strives to be the independent voice for Nevada's children and families. I'm here today to speak in support of Agenda Item 5.08. High immunization rates and coordinated efforts are critical to protecting public health. Vaccines not only help children stay healthy, they also protect our entire community by stamping out serious diseases. As an organization, we'd like to advocate for the quick restoring of the Washoe County Health District's access to SAMs, which will allow for active monitoring by a health district statistician and epidemiologist, which I cannot say, and better enable the school district to detect outbreaks at the school level. For these reasons, we believe that the steps outlined during the presentation are appropriate, effective, and essential to containing the outbreak of disease throughout Washoe County. We thank you for seeking their expertise and reviewing this process to ensure Washoe County continues to be a safe place for children, for their families, and for the entire community. Thank you.
That was good. Perfect. Thank you for your time, Deanna Mandichuk. I'm a mother of one of the children who was excluded, so some of the information I had has already been brought up, so I'll tell you a little bit about our story, starting with, of course, that we understand that the four cases at Demone Ranch were vaccinated, so we found it very unfair that we were -- my son was taken out of school, and that wasn't -- doesn't make sense if it's happening across the nation, too, that vaccinated children are getting the pertussis. Why are we only removing the unvaccinated? Doesn't that leave the children that are still at school vaccinated at risk also if we're trying to be concerned about the public health? So, he felt punished. When I researched it, too, one of the things I found was in 2016, the CDC also said that the vaccine wasn't as effective as they wanted. There was something about the strains even changed, so the current outbreaks test the strains. It wasn't the one that was in the vaccine, so that would be something else I would question. If we can test the strain that's happening, if it's not the one in the vaccine, then there's no point in removing kids. That would be a good test. The event was very traumatic to our family, especially my son. We ended up getting his vaccine up to date, against my better judgment, because he has honors classes and sports, and he didn't want to be left out for that 21 days. So, we went and got his vaccine. He ended up suffering a reaction. He had a migraine headache for five days and really didn't move for that amount of time. Unfortunately, he didn't need it, but it was mandated so he could go back to school, which should be his right to go to public school without a mandated medical procedure, especially if it's not going to work. I would recommend that this policy also be changed. I believe it should be up to the parents to allow them to go to school, choosing their risk. I think that what we went through is a family did more damage than good. We didn't hear of any other outbreaks after they were removed. So, while this was happening, also, they did address that we didn't receive much support as the families excluded. It sounds like they had a lot of communication between the groups, but no support to the families excluded, except for our football coach. We did receive one phone call after he went back to school from Bren Lapenta, just to make sure he was up on his schoolwork. Other than that, no contact from anybody. Just to -- last night, knowing I was coming in, I asked my son, looking back, how it affected him and what he would have to say about it. He's not a very emotional, dramatic guy, and he took a second, and his word was horrible. He said, "It was horrible, Mom." And then he stopped, and he said, "It was actually the worst thing that ever happened to me." He took a pause, and then he said, "I'm not even joking." So, I just thought you should know that. That's what we're putting the kids through. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate you allowing us the chance to speak and you're patiently sitting here working. I'm Kristin McLeod. I'm also a pediatrician. I am also a mother of three children who I love very fiercely. So, I wanted to just start by saying after listening, the thank you to everybody here, everybody, because we're all here because we love children. We really, really want our children to grow and develop in the best and healthiest environments. And it's a good thing that we get together and talk about different ways to do that, and we make sure that we're doing our best to make the best choices for them. So, we love kids. We have that in common. We live in Nevada. Generally, in Nevada, we like some form of independence, relatively independent folks. I feel that your response to the pertussis outbreak was something you weren't expecting to have to do, and you did a very nice job doing it the first time. Of course, there is room for improvement. Of course, you want to continue to question, was this the best practice? Is this what we would do the next time? And believe me, I want to reassure you that nobody more so than scientists like to prove the other scientists wrong. We like that, and we're specialists at it. So, please keep that up, keep up the questioning. But what I would say is there's freedom to -- freedom to make a choice to not vaccinate your child, and you absolutely have that freedom to make that choice and to raise your child in the safest way that you feel possible. But there's also freedom from, and the rights of the child, based on the UN Convention of Rights of the Child. The child has rights to life, to health, to social and emotional health, and part of that health is a freedom from, freedom from preventable significant death and significant disability. And that goes back to the point that Dr. Slots made about invasive disease. I understand their pertussis vaccine is not perfect. None of the vaccines are perfect, and we're working all the time, again, to make them better and prove each other wrong and get a better one and do it a better way. So, please trust that we'll continue to do that. But vaccines undeniably prevent an enormous amount of death and disability. I have seen children die of hemophilus influenzae B meningitis, and I know that's not the disease we're talking about tonight. I have seen children become permanently deaf and disabled from measles. I have seen an 18-year-old athlete die of influenza A, perfectly healthy 18-year-old athlete. This can happen, and it's horrible, and their families love them every bit as fiercely as you love yours. So, let's continue to work on this, but I stand strongly on the side of encouraging vaccination for everybody if they're going to be in our public school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Shannon Michelson. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight. I actually came in support of my colleagues, but also for a different agenda item, so I'll try to keep this one short, but I just wanted -- I felt compelled to speak as a general pediatrician who spent significant portion of my life not only training but maintaining up-to-date standards of care for patients in our community. I think that I just want to give my support for how this outbreak was handled. It's impressive, the numbers, when you're talking about a 17x higher rate of infection in unvaccinated kids, even though they were withheld. I think those numbers would have most probably been higher otherwise, so I'm not sure of the timeframe of the 21 days, but I would say that to err on the side of being more cautious is appropriate, and I am really impressed at how well this was contained. In general, I agree with everything Dr. Slots said, and that vaccine-preventable illnesses, of course, as a pediatrician, the evidence in support of vaccinating our kids and requiring that for school as strongly as possible is something that I'm supportive of and will continue to be. It only takes seeing a few of kids who are not able to be vaccinated, immunocompromised, or infants who haven't yet received their vaccines die from these illnesses to be even more supportive of it. So, thank you, guys, for all the work you do and that you have done so much and that this was contained so well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay. Just want to make sure we didn't miss anyone before we move on. Last chance. All right. Well, I would like to thank you all for a great presentation, for hanging in there on a long night, even though we moved you earlier. It's still getting pretty late. And personally, just found it really informative, glad to know that the collaboration worked so well, and glad to see that there was also conversation around how to, you know, continuously improve. improve and make the system better. I would like to ask, before we move on, though, I think, Margaret, you might be able to best answer this or address these two things that came up in a few of the public comments. One, can you please address, there was reference to a policy. We don't have a policy, and I'd like you to just clarify that and kind of where that confusion might be. And then also, if you could just expand a little bit on the exclusions and explain a little bit more how that came about.
There is no policy. Like Kevin alluded, we follow state statute, and they work closely with the CDC nationally. Most states have something like this. So the policy, for me, was also confusing. There really is no policy. I think that the thought was maybe there was a policy and we wanted to review it. I do think this was a good exercise in hearing people with opposing views, but unfortunately, there's no policy to change because that, there is some state mandate. And then you asked a question about the exclusions.
Do you want to? I'll let Dr. Mc.
Yeah. So I think the question about the student exclusions and what the, what the parameters were for the exclusions for that, as far as vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Oh, okay. And I think maybe the health district could help with that. So in order to protect the unvaccinated, whether it's a medical exclusion, usually that's the, the real danger, is if they are immunocompromised. The practice is to exclude unvaccinated in an effort to protect them. So, and again, that's a decision that is driven by public health policy and guidelines.
Yes, so to, to follow on that, and, and also with the policy piece, then we're back to the Nevada revised statutes, and that, I can read all of 392 dot 446. The immunization of pupils, protection of child exempt from immunization if dangerous disease exists in schools. Whenever the State Board of Health or a local board of health determines that there is a dangerous contagious disease in a public school attended by a child for whom exemption from immunization is claimed pursuant to provisions of NRS 392 dot 437 or 392 dot 439, and that's the medical and the religious exemptions. The Board of Trustees of the school district or the governing body of the charter school in which the child is enrolled shall require either that the child be immunized or that the child remain outside the school environment and the local health officer be notified. And then, as far as the exclusion period, that was driven by the incubation, incubation period of the disease that Ms. Kerr won't address previously, but I'll also open it up if there's further response, anybody wants to.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, trustees, trustee Kelly, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, first off, I just want to, I want to say thank you for the presentation. Very informative. It's very interesting to see, you know, kind of the background, the NRS and the Washington County laws and policies that drive our response to something like this. And I also want to commend the, the parents and the community members that are here, because this is a very emotional issue, especially after what had just happened at Damone Ranch High School. And so there's a lot of passion about this, and I really appreciate the fact that everybody listened to each other, you know, as a, as a board, we've heard other issues that I don't think are quite this serious, and yet the parents were just all over each other. And so I really appreciate everyone respecting each other, as you talked about opposing viewpoints. I think, for, for me at least, because I've really been following this closely, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, there's, there's a couple things that are going on here. I mean, you first off have a specific outbreak at a specific school with pertussis, so a specific disease. Now, you've also got NRS, and you've got Washington County laws that are in play, you've got the school district's response to all this, and then you've got vaccination versus unvaccination. So with all these different pieces going on, I think the questions that I have, I want to focus really on Washoe County School District's response, because I feel that's where we can try to make things a little bit clearer, better, easier, and more effective the next time we have an outbreak, whether it's pertussis or something else. So I'm going to try to focus on, on those couple of questions. First off, I know one of the speakers, Tanya Taylor, had sent an email to the board a few days ago. They had a number of questions, and so I would like to see if, if school district staff can work with the health department to go through those and see, you know, which ones can we answer and can we get those responses back to her and to the board, just to help us understand all the sides a little bit better. So one of the first questions I have was, this student absenteeism monitoring system. I'm really glad that, I'm sad that it wasn't being utilized maybe in the past, but now that there's a real push to, to get that system where health officials can, can tap into that data. And I'd just like to know, my first question is on that, how is that going? How quickly do you think that you'll have access to that data? Is there anything that the school district can do to try to speed that, that up so that they have access to that information? Second question I had was, the procedure for cleaning a school when an outbreak has been identified and an outbreak is ongoing, is that something where, like, let's say in this case, Damone Ranch High School, is it Damone Ranch High School staff, their custodians, that are the ones cleaning? Or can the school district bring in cleaning people, custodians, from other schools to that school and just give it a real thorough, all-hands-on-deck kind of response? So kind of maybe lead me through, what are, what's our response to cleaning a school? And then, one last question I had, I have a few more, but I'll stop after this one. I saw that on the chart, at least with pertussis, we had, Damone Ranch High School had had an outbreak, and Bishop Minogue had had an outbreak. And my question was, I'm sure that, you know, we were talking to the Washington County Health Department, and I know Bishop Minogue was probably talking to the Washington County Health Department. My question is, was Washington County School District talking to Bishop Minogue at the same time? Because even though they're separate high schools, one's public, one's religious and private, the students all hang out with each other. So I was just curious how the communication was between these two separate schools, because maybe in the future, a Washington County school might have an outbreak, and, you know, a charter school or another private school or someone else would have an outbreak similar. And I'm kind of curious about the communications with that. So I'll stop at those three questions for now.
Thank you very much, trustee Kelly. So I'll go ahead and start. As far as for the questions that were sent in by Ms. Taylor, we'll take a look at those, and we'll see which ones we can answer as far as for the school district, and we can get support from the Washoe County Health District. I know that many of those questions were actually answered during the presentation today, so we won't, we won't have to go back through and answer those questions. As far as for the SAMs line data, we actually had been doing this for, for quite a few years. I mean, this goes all the way back to my chief of staff days, when we actually started to do the SAMs line data. And it comes to a resource issue for our student health services. And so I understand that the discussions are happening. I'm looking forward to what the decision is going to be. I mean, I'm full in support of reinstituting SAMs, but I will tell you that it is a resource issue for student health services as well, for line tracking. For the procedures for cleaning, this is one of my favorite ones, because we have a phenomenal team that goes out. We get the emails about 10:30 at night when Michelle and her crew go in, so we actually do have an outbreak crew that goes in, and whether that's through heated extraction of carpet, if there's a PVI. So all of these terms, we got to be very familiar with when we had the norovirus outbreak. PVI, for those of you that don't know, is projectile vomiting incident. So they take care of the PVIs. They are a dynamic group, they're a hard-working group, but there is actually a crew that will go in and do the carpet extracting and any type of cleaning. And when I tell you cleaning, think of a kindergarten classroom and all the toys, all of the equipment that's in there, the manipulatives, books, they are wiped down. And in fact, in this last norovirus we had, we actually had to plastic bag some of the items and take them out. So it is a very intense process, but there is a defined cleaning group that will go in and do that. And then for the Minogue and the pertussis, as far as communication, Margaret, do you want to see if we can talk about that one?
We didn't talk specifically to anybody at Minogue, other than through the health district. I do know that they made the decision to close the school. It was not a decision made by the health district, as I understand that. There have been some other outbreaks, and we're in communication with those schools, giving them tips, tools that we have, so that children are kept well. I do have to say that, you know, as several of the physicians that were here in support of vaccinations said, scientists differ all the time, and we could meet every night for months and months to come and still not agree on this. Unfortunately, a lot of the science is driven by the CDC and scientists that are looking at huge data. And so at this point, when we have a exclusion like this, we are at the mercy of the NRS and direction by the CDC. I appreciate the dialogue, because when we were talking to the epidemiologists, I was going, really? Another 21 days? And so I think we have to understand that we're not going to all agree on whether to vaccinate or not. Right now, I don't think we have a choice about exclusion. I think that we need to focus on the concerns that the parents brought forth on, how do we keep these kids engaged? And I, we are having some work done, and I had a student that came with her dad, and we started talking about things, and she says, "Yeah, I was one of those Damone Ranch students." And I think that we need to maybe get the education team talking to those students and asking them, how did you stay engaged? Was it enough? What can we do better? Because there's some things that we're not going to have control over, and unfortunately, at this point, I understand what the, the Freedom Nevada is saying and, and, you know, their concerns, but I come from a medical model, and I just have opposing views. I respect the fact that we've worked so well together and hopefully have been respectful to them.
Thank you. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. It was very insightful for me. I know the couple of things I took from it was that the, the vaccine doesn't necessarily eliminate the risk, but reduces the risk, and I think that, that was a key for me from your presentation. And the NRS directs, the health department, the health department directs us, and there, and there's really no way of changing that unless the NRS gets changed, it only can be done by the legislature and the, and the governor. The, the three questions I had, the first one's for the school district, and I'm, I don't know, we don't have transportation here, but we talk about the cleaning procedures of our schools, and the students ride the bus, and the buses are shared by schools. And so if there's an outbreak at Damone Ranch High School, and that, and those buses are going to Damone and then going to a local elementary school, what is being done to deep clean? Oh, Rick Martin. No. So the, the, thank you very much for coming. I didn't even know you were here.
I was in Fallon.
Oh, okay. The, the deep cleaning of our school buses when we have outbreaks in our schools, than when the school's required a deep clean?
Correct. So, for the record, Rick Martin, Director of Transportation. From that standpoint, trustee Cottle, we, anytime we get a response that there is an outbreak at a particular school, then we put in our protocols in place, which is to disinfect, continuous disinfecting of the buses that are connected with that school. So, and even if they transport field trips, things like that, that protocol falls into place. So today, we got Vaughn, or a couple of days ago, we got Vaughn. We're cleaning Vaughn buses, we're disinfecting those, and top to bottom, in and out, and that's a job in itself, because you get 60 kids in, they, they possibly are infected, so we clean. Then we get 60 more. So it's a continuous process for us, so, but we do do that.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for being here.
Not a problem. Thank you for asking the question. I appreciate it.
My second question's for the health department. The chart that has the outbreak trends, for example, 2012 and 2015, even 2017, huge spikes in GI, whereas other years, not much. Do you see something that connects those years as far as what's going on? Is there weather, or is there anything that can give you almost like a hint that this could be a tough year for a certain illness? Or is it just whatever happens, happens?
Well, and with GI, you can break that down into several different categories. So again, it's organism-dependent. Most of our GI is norovirus-related, and if you know anything about norovirus, it's very effective, it's spreading to a lot of people quickly, but it usually clears your system in a miserable 24-hour period, and it's over. So this is, and I can't speak directly to these years, because again, I'd have to go back through the data and make sure there's nothing else driving these spikes, but particularly with norovirus, that does make up a high composition of these GI illnesses that we see, is that if there is a delay in reporting with something that moves so quickly, or if students, for example, are involved in after-school activities with other schools, that's how you especially promote the spread within different schools. And these are not counts of unique schools, so this may be a school that had a reemergent outbreak over and over that could also drive those numbers. So particularly important to expedite the reporting of disease so that we can help identify and mitigate the spread, which is likely what is going on here with these spikes with the GI, is neuro-driven, rapid movement.
Perfect. Thank you. Then my, my last question, we had obviously the outbreak at Bishop Minogue, outbreak at Damone Ranch. It's good to know that Bishop Minogue made the decision to close their school. So at what point does the school dis, our school district decide to close the school? And at what point does the health department tell the school district, you need to close the school?
I can't give you a black-and-white answer for that. I think we look at the situation that's occurring, and when we think that it's really something that needs to be done because of the severity of the outbreak that, that's taking place. I can tell you that we welcomed it when Bishop Minogue offered to close the school, because, you know, obviously, it's, it's a complicated approach to how, how we stop an outbreak, and that was an ideal situation of stopping all contact at, at the school as far as trying to end that outbreak. We had the Nevada Day holiday coming up when that happened, and so they were looking at a short week, and, hey, we think it makes sense to do this, to protect our, our kids, and we certainly agreed with that. But I can't give you a black-and-white answer of when the health district would require the, the school to be closed. You know, it's going to be case by case, by, by the school, the population, what we're seeing happening, happening there, the type of disease that's, that's occurring.
And those were questions that Dr. McNeil, we had a, a call, I wasn't able to go because I was handling the outbreak, but we had a conference call with several administrators, and she asked that question, at what point? So I, in turn, asked the health district, and at that point, they said, no, we would not do that.
So it doesn't sound like there's anything, any, anything set in stone by the school district, it's more of deferring to what the health district's telling you?
Well, I think that they have the bigger picture. They have the community picture that we don't, and so we rely on them, that's their specialty epidemiology to guide us in what we need to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
And just a little bit of a history up here. So if you take a look at that chart, and you'll see 2012 and 2015, and I know Kevin will correct me if I'm, if I'm correct or incorrect, or Dr. Todd or Heather. So back in 2012 and then 2015 was when we had the very substantial norovirus outbreak, and at one point in time, we had about 35 of our schools on outbreak status. And if you remember, we actually did close North Valleys High School, and that was for about a period of a week. And that was a very intense discussion as far as, and Kevin and I have known each other for many years, and we had some intense discussions around this issue, because it does affect so many. It affects staff, it affects children, it affects the, the adults, and, you know, so there's, there's a huge issue when we're talking about, do we close a school and what that, that repercussion is. But I also want to bring up the fact, and I'm glad that Mr. Martin was here, because we actually learned from the norovirus outbreak that you do have to disinfect buses, because we actually had data as far as tracking the students, and Chief Trevino was involved with this. We actually were able to track the buses and where the disease was, was spreading at that point in time. So we have come a tremendous way with our partnership with Washoe County Health District on learning from these incidents. on learning from these incidences. We're by no means perfect, but it is something that we absolutely are working for to make sure that we do the best interest of our students and our staff. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you. Thank you for sharing the information, for educating really the, the community and, and all of us. And, and I also want to thank the families that had to go through what they had to go through while we tried to figure this out, if you will. I, I am appreciative of the doctor that said, this was our first time having to deal with something like this. And sometimes you make it up as you go when you have to. And, and, excuse me, in receiving the presentation, there were actually four questions I had and three were already answered. So I'll just go to the fourth one. And the fourth thing is just because we are learning and we are, we have gotten some great feedback and just like we got some things from the norovirus outbreaks of the past, I would just like to just encourage all of us in the district from a staff standpoint, maybe there's an opportunity to get some feedback more from those parents who are on the other end and perhaps even those students. We are not going to be able to not exclude children. That isn't, that isn't, that's, that's way above our pay grade, if you will. However, is there a better way that we can handle that? And it sounds as though there, there may be, we may, we may be able to gather some things from that. We did the best we could and, and I think, and I appreciate those that said, we handled it well under the circumstances. And I, and I have to, I have to really agree with that because this really could have been a really bad thing all over the district, all over the community, and it wasn't. So really kudos to the fast movement and making the decisions and really continuing this thing. And so perhaps what we can do in, in the interim is look at, how can we do that part of it a little better? Should we end up here again? Because, you know, life is life and at some point, we probably will. That's it. That's all. My other things were covered. I just, I'm appreciative that it was so contained, so fast. And then just let's look at how we can close that other loop. We can't give you what you want in terms of not doing it. That isn't within our control, but gosh, what can we do perhaps to make it not the most, you know, horrific thing that ever happened to, to a young man?
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to piggyback on what Trustee Taylor was saying about the, the student support protocols, yeah, I really, really appreciate the fact that you'll be talking to the parents and the students and getting feedback on what we can do from a school district perspective to support students that have to be excluded or for incubation periods or whatever, they have to be out of school. Certainly academically, I don't know if there's any ways to try to keep them engaged with, you know, athletics or things like that, but it'd be great to, after you've had all those conversations and you have some ideas of what we can do better for the next outbreak, which I'm sure unfortunately will happen at some point, that would be good to bring back to the board so that we can hear what was come up with and we can talk about that. And maybe that's something that we can, we can approve or authorize so that it's ready, it's in place for the next time.
And I believe that Troy Parks and the principal, they, you know, they've been in conversation about some of those things. So I believe that it is, you know, being discussed.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you. I just want to add the kudos for the very, very illuminating conversation. I think all of us have learned something. I appreciate the incredible thorough, comprehensive response that you all put together. And I'm, I'm wondering if there is an opportunity for us to spell out in a policy that we do follow NRS in the exclusion and perhaps some of those best practices that you all are learning together from this could become part of a, a policy for us in the future so that, so that it is clear to everyone that it's not our decision, that these things happen as a protocol. Maybe it doesn't belong in policy, but it sounds like it might be helpful if we had that conversation in the future when, when you all are ready to come back. Obviously, it is frustrating for people that exclusions have to occur. I think it's frustrating for all of us that exclusions have to occur and particularly for a communicable disease that has a vaccine that is not as effective as we would like it to be yet. So it might be something, again, not a, not a direction because we would all have to talk about whether that would become a policy, but we have a process for that. And I just want to throw it out that perhaps that might be a good way for us to, and for future boards, because hopefully this won't happen again while we're here. But people who haven't had the opportunity to learn from this exercise and will follow us to be able to have that codified for them. So just, just a thought. And again, thank you so much, everyone, for your patience and staying with us tonight.
All right. Well, thank you again. Thank you for, yeah, staying late and appreciate all the hard work.
Madam President? I have a thought as to a suggestion and I know that it might be extremely radical for the board to consider.
I think I was going there myself.
Were you? Okay. We have a series of very exciting proposals and agreements to approve that will support the necessary phases of contracting and elements of contracting for the existing Proctor Hug High School campus as well as the new Hug High School campus at Wild Creek. I know it's uncommon for us to consolidate action items that would total 6 million, or I'm sorry, 10 million. 10 million, $688,500. But again, we have vetted these programs. We've had them vetted by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. And I would, if my colleagues are supportive, make a motion that we approve item 5.03, 5.04, 5.05, 5.06, and 5.07.
Great. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do we have any public comment on any of these 5.03 through 5.07? All right. I'm just going to open it up just to make sure we have, we are approving funding for construction-related items for the new CTE school at the current Hug High School site and the new Hug High School at the Wild Creek site. Do we have anyone that would like to make public comment on agenda items 5.03 through 5.07?
Can I just ask who provided the second on that item?
There were a couple of them.
Sorry, my fault. I'll try to be better about that. So we had a motion from President, sorry. I'm the president. Trustee Simon Holland, a second from Trustee Minneto. No public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. And I appreciate the, the, yeah, our staff and everyone who's stuck around for that very quick motion. I know we wanted to have the opportunity to put this on the agenda because it is such a high-dollar amount, but something we're very excited to move forward with and just really looking forward to the two new sites that we're going to begin working on and already have begun working on. So, thank you. Appreciate your hanging in there.
You're more than welcome to stay though.
Yeah, there's more exciting stuff to come.
Tony, I see you back there too. You're more than welcome to stay.
Well, that takes care of a big chunk of the agenda, but we do still have a few more important items ahead of us. Thank you, Trustee Simon Holland. Appreciate that. So we will now move on to agenda item 5.09, Presentation and Discussion on Safe Routes to School Programming for the 2019-20 School Year as It Relates to Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety. And our presenter today is Officer MJ Cloud, our Safe Routes to School Coordinator.
I appreciate you having me here tonight. Last month, or the last meeting, I, I put together this presentation, but things have changed, just even in a, in a couple of months. So in front of you and electronically, you'll see that you have the new crash data. And I first want to just identify what vulnerable user, although it's a mouthful, what it means in these reports. A vulnerable user is going to be the person who's going to lose when there is a crash. So it could be a pedestrian, a bicyclist, skateboard, roller skates, scooter, but something versus a vehicle, that vulnerable user is going to be the one that loses. So that's where the report, the crash data report is going to refer to them as a vehicle versus a vulnerable user student. You also have in front of you a memo. That memo was drafted because Safe Routes to School presented in front of the RTC board. And the RTC board is made up of councilmen from the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, and the Washoe County Commissioners as well as mayors. So in not wanting to, wanting to let the board know what has been shared with the councilmen and your elected officials, I went ahead and gave you that memo. And that's the memo that was used to construct the slideshow that was presented to RTC. So with that having been said, JJ, we'll, we'll go through what I had put together. Oh, it's me. Apologies. Do you want to tell me which one or just me guess? Okay. So with what's happening this year, oftentimes, Safe Routes to School comes in front of a board or goes in front of the council and it's very light. It's very, it's talking about the fun programs. I'm showing slideshows of kids walking and biking and it makes everyone feel good. And I have changed it up a bit, as is the theme with the slideshow. So devastating change is happening with the vehicle versus students this year. And this, like I said, this data that you're seeing now is outdated. We're further into the school year and we now have 25 injuries and one death. So what we're doing is, in, in August, there was our first vehicle accident and I don't need to read this to you, but the, that's what started our school year off. One of the students that was hit is in Utah now. She, it, the, the parents are fine with us sharing this information. She's at a rehab facility. She's no longer with her family. She's on her fourth brain surgery and she's able to sit in a wheelchair. That is devastating, but it goes down. It's not just the devastating injuries that is affecting our whole community and our students right now. When a student is hit, there are other things that are happening. Glasses are being broken, their school uniforms are being cut, they're, even if the injuries are scrapes and scratches, it affects their whole family immensely. And it also affects the driver that's behind that wheel. So as far as tracking the accidents go, that's what you have in front of you. And I sent it electronically this morning. We're working with RTC and they're mapping out what's happening and where for the students There is no geographical. We've had their analysts look at it. We've had our transportation look at this data. We've had our GIs people looking at the data. There's no socio-economical pattern we can find. There's no geographical pattern there. And what I'll get to is no fault distinguished between the vulnerable user and the vehicle. And there's no more bicyclists than there are pedestrians. Also age, it's ranging from our high school students down to first graders. It, there is no pattern that we've been able to discern so far and that's probably one of the, another alarming fact that has to do with what's happening this year. So we have been making mode changes. The walk zone, as we presented earlier this year, was extended. And we cannot make a correlation between that extension and our vehicle versus student crashes. We're also unable to make a correlation between the growth. So before people begin to ask or make assumptions about the growth in Reno, we're not able to find any of those patterns either, or construction zones. So we've eliminated pushing students outside their normal walk zone by a construction zone and we've eliminated any accidents directly in a construction zone. We've made changes in infrastructure and we're continuing to make changes in infrastructure. This is just Catherine Dunn. This was a grant that they had put in for and we doubled the sidewalk. We're encouraging change. So in the memo that's in front of you, you'll see that a million dollars in infrastructure has been spent in the last several years. And then there's also over $360,000 just in non-infrastructure, meaning the education, the encouragement for, for the students. We've changed what we're trying to do in communication. We now have the chief's report. We have the police beat. We're trying to open up lines of communication with Megan Downs and their whole communication team. We have some of them coming to the Safe Routes to School bi-monthly meetings. I'm also setting up meetings with them on the side, trying to come up with a tagline so we can move forward with incentive items. For example, putting a magnet, a commitment from Nevada Energy and a commitment from the school district to put a magnet on every fleet vehicle. That is going to have a tagline that's been approved and decided upon is a huge thing. Renown is, has committed to that as well. So we have implement, we have safety plans at schools. However, a lot of them, the older schools, what the City of Reno is calling them, those are the schools that they've called upon to have audits done at. Our older schools, we can't put our fingers on those safety plans. They're just, we're in paper and they're with maps and they're buried. So we've tried, Safe Routes to Schools tried to go back through some of those older schools and revise their safety plan, get everything online. And what, and what's involved in a safety plan are the things you see up above. And I have those available upon request. Oftentimes, they will address the traffic as well as the encouragement and education. The reason we're able to, as a Safe Routes to School program, help them with streamlining their traffic is because if we can make it safer or even the perception that it's safer and more organized, then maybe more parents will allow their students to walk or bike. One place where the school district, this is where you can come into play, is trying to get more of the safety into, into, integrated into our education. So geography and science, all of it, mathematics. You can plug in safety messages throughout the day. You can plug in safety messages just as a teacher at, throughout your entire lesson plan. If we can start moving that, then we're going to create change eventually. Encouraging the biking and walking so it's a cool thing and it's no longer viewed as, oh, your parent can't pick you up. Well, you, you must not have a parent that loves you as much as mine does, or you must not have enough money, or your parent has to work more than mine does. If we can make biking and walking cool and if we can integrate some of the safety messages into our math and science and reading, then that's going to be a great thing that can come from top down to our teachers. They're already, I understand, they have a lot to cover. Testing is important, but maybe we can get some of these messages into the classrooms. The change in teamwork. I hate to take advantage of the crisis that we're in of these catastrophic numbers. I don't want to be here reporting these injuries and the tragedies. But if we have the opportunity that we have right now to make, to make change in teamwork, for example, for example, Vision Zero. Vision Zero's been adopted by all of the councils as well as the Washoe County Commissioners. So their action plan has already been adopted. And if you are interested to see who's part of Vision Zero, the Washoe County School District has been in on being a partner with them since their conception three years ago. I've been at the meetings representing the school district from the get-go and I have a complete list of who's involved now. It's basically all of your community members that have made Vision Zero and moved forward with each independent Northern Nevada Trucking Meadows, your council in order to make things happen. So that 35-page action plan is available. If anybody wants to see, well, what is it and who is it? What are they doing? What do they have planned for our, for our Northern Nevada? It's available. I think that here, right in our lap, that's been done is, our program now at Safe Routes to School, it began in 2009. That's when the beginning of the grant was written, and that's when the chief of police at that time said, yes, we'll take it. We'll do it. No other, no other agency wanted to take it, and our chief said, we'll do it. We're going to, we're going to do this. So 10 years later, we went through and I completely rewrote, we completely rewrote the objectives. So our committee decided on new goals and objectives, and it's all been revised, and those are also available anytime anybody wants to see the new goals and objectives. Those are going to be as an amendment attached to the new contracts coming down from NDOT. So when I do these slideshows, then I put it back, and I ask, what will you do to create change? And it's not particularly a question for those of you in this room. This is our target audience. When I go to do parent meetings at night, and when I'm doing the safety assemblies at a school where they've asked me to come, that's, I'm speaking to the people who want change. But with the news, with more public safety announcements, with more awareness, then maybe that message of creating change will get out there. The message that, I said I'm going to get to it later, it's not a fault. We can't find a juvenile who makes a bad decision or isn't educated and ends up hit by a car at fault. And we can't blame a driver who has looked both ways and didn't see the child who ran out into the crosswalk, and they had no time to react. We're past the point where we need to put fault on a driver or a vulnerable user. I've had the benefit of being on the radio recently and on the news recently, and the number one thing I would like for us to embrace and pass on and ask of our community is that it's everyone's responsibility. It can't be just one group. It can't be just one area. It has to be everyone's responsibility when they get behind a wheel to know and understand it's up to them to slow down below the speed limit if children are around. Whether you're in a school zone or not, it's up to the person who chooses to step into the road or drive, ride their bike to make sure they're not distracted. It is absolutely the responsibility of the entire community. Because the numbers where we are now, it's affecting everyone. If you have not been touched this year personally by a vehicle versus a vulnerable user crash, it is a matter of time at this rate. I don't want it to be, but it is a matter of time that you, listening, you will be affected. And that's what we want to avoid.
Well, thank you so much, MJ. And I think, I think we should all be responsible here at this table for creating some of that change. And I know we already all are working at it. I've heard, I think each of us bring up this issue out in the community when we've been at events. I know Dr. McNeil's bringing it up at every school visit she does. I know last year, President Simon Holland brought it up at many of our community outreach events, and we were able to touch on it today at a community event. So I do think that's where it lands for us, is when we're out in the community doing whatever work we're doing for the district or on behalf of the district, we need to be sharing this message with the general community, but the parents, the children, everyone that we have contact with. I can only imagine how devastating and frustrating this year has been for you for something that has been your message from day one to get to this point where it takes on such a different tone and different sense of urgency. So thank you for all you're doing and for just really fighting for all of our kids every day and for their safety. So, all right. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, President. And thank you, MJ. I, I know how hard you work, and I know that this is your life's work and that you have been so dedicated. And I know that we have many partners working on this with us, and we're all frustrated by where we are today. Some of the things that have just occurred to me over the months that we've been looking at this, is there anything we can do with regard to redesign of drop-off areas so we don't have so many cars coming into the area where kids are walking? And I know you've looked at that, but if there are things that we can do infrastructure-wise, signage, arrows, volunteering to go out and, you know, help with traffic, that's, that's one thing. And if you could just comment on that, I have a few others on my list.
I will. I'm glad that you brought that up because Polycetus is the perfect example. It was specifically built and designed similar to the improvements done at Brown Elementary to provide an area that's safe for pickup and drop-off. And meeting with the principal and the traffic engineer and RPD out there, watching the parent, watching what's happening at pickup, what you observe is, although all of that infrastructure has been provided to the parents, they have queued up and they're blocking the bike lane. Now, the students who did ride their bike can't go. Not only are they blocking the bike lane, they've actually queued so they're stopped in the travel lane. You had parents who were driving the wrong way in the travel lane, and you had parents who were parked on the wrong side of the road, which means they traveled the wrong side of the road in a travel lane. All of these things, and Mr. Angotti had us out there specifically, and he said, well, give me one more chance. I'm going to send out some education, some information to remind parents of these illegal acts. But it comes back down to, if you don't have to be in the school zone, if your student doesn't have a special needs and is old enough, please pick a spot that's a block or two away and take that opportunity to teach your child how to walk that last block or two. If you want to walk with them, walk with them. But if we could keep the vehicles out of the school zone, then you're not being part of the problem.
And maybe, you know, maybe there's a campaign we could do, you know, Walk That Block, and get students involved in Walk That Block.
I love that.
You know, t-shirts, get the kids at schools in their leadership groups to be conveying that message. And I think there's, I think there's a lot of willingness by our students to be involved. I know our Student Advisory Council has been very interested in what, what can we do? But if we could, if we could have kids take some responsibility for some really simple messaging, that might be one thing we could help with. I know there are also conflicts where we have areas in the county where we don't have sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I am intimately familiar with the county's challenges with getting those sidewalks in. But we've, we've got to, we've got to come together as a community, and whether it's Special Assessment District funding or whatever we need to do, we need to have sidewalks provided for our children to get to school. I mean, that was the whole premise of Safe Routes to Schools, was that every child had a safe way to get to school. So, you know, I'd love to put that on our list at the governing body level, the elected level, to help convey that conversation to, it's not going to happen if, if we all don't come together and try to make that happen. I also just want to put in a plug that our bell schedules do contribute when we have kids out so early in the morning, in the dark, walking to bus stops or walking to school. And I know we're going to have that conversation later on this spring. I also heard from Sparks Councilwoman Charlene Bybee, who is very involved in helping to keep our kids safe and, Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. She's on the Capital Funding Protection Committee. And she told me about a website, pedsafe.net, or PED-SAFE, P-E-D-S-A-F-E dot net. And it has some really interesting features to help kids get to school safely. And so I just wanted to pass that along, and she said she was going to bring it to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. Another thing we might do is work with service clubs, Rotary and Seroptimus, on getting reflective tape and reflective clothing, reflective vests for kids so they don't have to, you know, they don't have to acquire that themselves. But I know you've had that message to families, and we've had it out there. If your kids have to be out and it's dark, and many of our kids do, let's get some reflective clothing on them, or some vests, or, or something. I know at one of the events, they handed out the little armbands that flash, and, boy, every night when I'm walking the dog in the dark, I am grateful for that thing because I have to cross the street where people are coming around a blind turn. So maybe some reflective vests and tapes. So those are my comments for now, but just thinking about, how can we get, how can we get kids involved? How can we get the students to help us solve this? Because we know students have a lot of impact on their parents.
I would love for anybody who's involved with the legislation to, earlier, we got that presentation, something that changed in the past few years was not being able to hand out incentive items that would have to have a safety message on it. Well, that tied Safe Routes to Schools hands because I used to be able to purchase just stickers, reflective stickers from companies. So if we can get that legislation changed back, that will support something that you're talking about.
Right. See me on it. You know, something simple.
Thank you. Is there any more comments or questions for MJ today?
Just a comment. I like what you said in that it's, it's a, first of all, thank you for your work. Let me back up on all this thing. And it's, I mean, this is, this is a year that nobody ever expected us to have. And unfortunately, even though it's on everyone's radar now, it still isn't getting any better. I was hoping the turn of the, of the year, I could say even of the decade, right, was going to be a little better. But we're at the same, we're at the same pace. So thank you for that work. But you're right, we do have a window now. When more people are talking about it, and more people are interested in it, and, you know, I've had a chance to just have some conversations with, with some people. And I think your comment about reaching out to some of the people that we have at the governmental level that might be able to help. I went to high school with, with one of the people, one of the VPs at REMSA, and he said he's ready to jump in and help. I know that, I spoke with Irene, I think it was the last meeting, and we've gotten some positive feedback on that, by the way, on the Student Advisory Council's going to do a PSA, and the whole idea is, but we don't want, I mean, finally if it's showing at 2:00 in the morning, but can we show it at some other times as well? And so we're asking, I did some follow-up emails today, the stations to commit, and we've gotten some positive feedback so far. Need a couple more phone calls back. To commit to showing it at times when it's actually going to be seen, to, to do that so that it's those, it's those kinds of things. And so their people, REMSA's are ready to get involved, RTC is ready to get involved in helping with that PSA project. So as, as we need funding, they committed to that. You're raising your hand, Irene, so you want to say something? My job is just to get it shown and try to get some money, and that's, that's all I'm doing.
For the record, I'm in pain, Chief Communications Officer. Last week, I reached out to Lotus Radio and had a fantastic meeting with the managing director there, and he's agreed to give us some time at the front end of the traffic report or the news report, wherever he's got space. So they sell advertising. So when they haven't sold that advertising piece, he'll give it to us at no charge. So we're just in the process of figuring out the actual, the wording that we want to record. And, and then once we've got that done and we've got those audio files to Lotus Radio, they'll start running it. So I really appreciated their commitment. We asked them, they said, yeah, absolutely, we'll do that.
And part of what I found is that we were talking about ideas and who we should get to do the PSAs. I think the students are the best ones. I mean, they can talk to people and get people's attention way more than, than we can. And I'll just say, I mean, Channel 8 jumped on board right away. I did some follow-up with 2 and 4 today. And if we get 4, you get Fox, you get 11. So hopefully, we'll get, we'll get that pulled back. And then, once we have the commitment for the, for the video, and then, again, we have some commitment to help funding, help with funding on that. 2's in the room, so we're going to put some pressure on 2. Since they're in their, in their room, we're just going to put that out there on the record, on the record. We're on the record where, but, but I do believe, we have a great community, and I do believe that they'll, they'll jump on. And I'm going to try to get this locked down by Friday before, before, before I go on vacation. And then those things can be, can be working. And the sooner we get something out there, the better.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. I know that our Student Advisory Council, as Vice President Taylor mentioned, has been prioritizing this for their work. And, you know, one thing that I noticed in looking over all this information is, you know, there are fewer in the elementary school level that have been impacted this year. It is a higher percentage in middle and high school. And I do think that messaging from their peers is important and is, is something that has, carries more weight. And I would like Dr. McNeil to just give us a little update on the Student Advisory Council's work.
Absolutely. And our school police, I want to give a lot of credit to this because they, they actually came up with the idea for a guardian, and Deputy Chief and Chief Trevino came up with the idea as far as having a bracelet, and that it's something that the student would actually look down at. And that's the message that we've been getting out. You have to take this off. You have to get it out of your hand. And that's been a very strong message that I've been giving to our seniors. But the point is, is that we need them to be telling other students within the school. But it's a bracelet. It would say that I'm the guardian. And Student Advisory Council also wants to do stickers. As you all know, stickers are a big thing. You put it on your phone, you put it on your water bottle. So they, they're looking at doing stickers. They are also drafting the script. So Nathan took control of writing the script. They talked about it. They were getting the script ready to go. I know our communications team is on that. And I just want to tag on that our community really is stepping up on this, and that's, that's been the message that we've stressed, that it's not just a Washoe County School District issue. It is a community issue. It is a parent issue. It is a student issue. It is all of our issue in order to protect our kids. So I just want to thank you, MJ, for everything that you've been able to do.
Thank you so much.
There's one more legislation. I just want to make sure that we are aware of how change can happen. And right now, Safe Routes to School is strapped between K and 8. That's where our, that's where the federal funds can only cover. However, look at how many high school students are involved. So Senator Cortez Masto has introduced the Safe Routes to All right now, and it will include high schools.
That's great.
So, yeah. And I have information on finances, projects, what we have done, what we have spent, what we're doing now, what we're about to spend. If there are any questions, please email me. And then one more very, very helpful website is walkbiketoschool.org.
Thank you again.
Thank you for having me.
Have a good evening. All right, we're moving on to our last agenda item of the regular agenda, and I know many of you have been waiting patiently this evening. I appreciate that. I know it's been a long night. So we will move on to the Department of Gifted and Talented Education Programs' update regarding recommended gate school within a school SWAS program locations for the 2020-2021 school year and possible action to retain the current SWAS program locations for the 2020-2021 and 2021-2022 school year, and develop a regional model to take effect at the start of the 2022-2023 school year, or move the program at Roycom Elementary School to Mamie Toll's Elementary School, beginning with the 2021-2022, 2020, 2020-2021 school year. And this is for possible action. We're joined by Dr. Deborah Byers-Dorf, our chief academic, no, not a doctor.
Not a doctor.
Not a doctor, sorry, I got that one mixed up. Deborah Byers-Dorf, Chief Academic Officer, and Sherry DiMartini-Tino, our Director of GT Programs. Thank you.
Sorry for the length of that.
Obviously late, and I'm tired.
Yeah, that was a tongue twister. We worked a while on that one. So, so President Raymond and Deputy, or, excuse me, Superintendent, a little tired, so we're going to...
Yeah. Interim Superintendent McNeil, my goodness. Members of the board, thank you very much for having us. Last but certainly not least, I know, tonight. So I am joined tonight by our amazing Director of Gifted and Talented Education Programming, who I asked her if it would be okay if I quickly announced that Sherry is retiring. who I asked her if it would be okay if I quickly announced that Sherry is retiring in the not-too-distant future. And I think many of you may already know that. I think that secret's out. But I said, "Oh, this might be your last presentation, so we're going for the gold tonight." So, yeah, it is a little while. It was a little while.
It's not until October? Do we need a motion against that? Is that out of order?
Sherry is a delight to work with and has taught me a lot. And then, I also want to give a shout out, because you know he's now in the House, is our awesome Director of Transportation, Rick Martin. I invited him up, but he said he was okay where he's at. So you may have questions for him as we go along. So we're going to move through. We have quite a few slides that we want to share with you that I think you'll find will build a story as to what our eventual recommendation is. So we're going to kind of start bigger picture and then just keep kind of drilling down. All right? So I'm going to turn it over to Sherry to start us off.
Okay, slide? Okay. Got the slides? Okay. So Sherry DiMartino, for the record. I just want to go back in time. Last year, we did have a gate board policy, 6525. And the board supported that we have a framework for the gifted and talented education programming to support our GT students that have unique needs, both academically and emotionally.
So again, Deborah Byersdorf. Also wanted to remind our trustees that during the 2020 budget process, the recommendation was made to close our fourth school within a school SWAS program at Jerry Whitehead Elementary School due to low enrollment. And also wanted to update you that students that were attending the Whitehead SWAS program were transitioned over to GOM. There was 13 students that we were projecting to attend the program this year at Whitehead. Out of those 13, 11 of those students are attending at GOM right now. So Sherry and I came before you back in August, August 27th, to be specific, at your request that we would talk a bit further about the current placement of the remaining three school within a school programs at GOM Elementary School, Collin Ranch Elementary School, and Hansburger. So this is just a reminder of the action or the motion that happened that day on August 27th.
So currently, we have just finished up our universal assessment that was conducted in the fall. So students who are scoring at or above the 98th percentile are automatically eligible for GT services. Students are run through what's called a state eligibility matrix that our entire state uses. We look at cognitive scores, achievement scores, and other state-identified factors when identifying a GT kid. If a student receives a 99th percentile ranking on the universal assessment, we automatically reassess them for the SWAS program to see if they are highly or profoundly gifted. That assessment is done with the WISC-5, and it is performed by our gate psychologists for that SWAS possible eligibility. Our SWAS... Our SWAS program looks at the needs of our highly or profoundly gifted students. In grades 3 through 6, we are currently looking at transitioning 6th grade out of certain schools as we work in conjunction with our district initiative. Our SWAS classrooms are self-contained. Most of them are multi-grade level and incorporate differentiated strategies. Our curriculum, we follow our district curriculum. However, we enrich it. We make sure it's rigorous and it's accelerated when appropriate. We have daily interactions with like-minded peers. We use the 21st century skills of creativity, collaboration, communication. But mainly, we also have a GT-endorsed teacher that specializes in highly and profoundly gifted students to teach these students and address their social and emotional needs. Currently, we have in our SWAS program in the 1920 school year, Collin Ranch is having 48 students this year, GOM has 33, and Hansburger is at 59. We project, using the intent to commit for the enrollment for the 2021 school year, we are looking at Collin Ranch being at 65 students, GOM at 41, and Hansburger at 31. The reason Hansburger has dropped is because we are transitioning to Marcy Hurst or to the Magnet program for 6th grade. Okay, so heat map time. So I want to do a shout out to Brett Rodella and his team for helping create our heat maps for us. The last time we were in front of you, you had asked to look at heat maps for each of the different schools. This time, we're coming forward with a heat map that is all of our highly and profoundly gifted that are identified in grades 2 through 6, regardless if they are attending the SWAS program or not. Right now, we are sitting at about approximately 82% of our identified students attending one of the three SWAS programs.
So wanted to continue and talk to you a little bit about the work that's happened since we met with you back in August. Sherry and I have met with a number of people as we were working to determine a more regional approach and what might be feasible. So this slide shows you who we've talked with. You know Randy Baxley, our district demographer. So it was very important to look at capacity for our schools, taking into account rezoning efforts that Sherry talked about previously. We also worked real closely with Rick Martin and his team to take into account any potential movement in a program and what that might do to positively or perhaps negatively impact transportation, because we do provide transportation for our SWAS families who choose to avail themselves of that. We also met with our business and finance office as we were looking at projections next year and how many teachers that we would need at each of the SWAS sites. Just a quick aside, kind of similar to special education and English language funding for teacher allocations, we also have to pay close attention to ratios for our gifted and talented students. And then, Sherry and I also met with several of the area superintendents who oversee these schools that we're talking about this evening, to make sure that they understood what we were bringing forward to you, and that they could also reach out to their respective principals as well. So that work was not taken lightly. There was a lot of time spent. Sherry and I have spent quite a bit of time working through this, again, wanting to bring to you what we think is our very best thinking around this. So we worked to identify Toll's Elementary School as a potential school within a school site for next school year, for the 2021 school year. We think Toll's is a good site to consider, in part because of their capacity. They'll be sitting at around 60% capacity over the next few years. So there is definitely room to move a program there. And then, we also, we wanted to take it further and identify what, besides capacity, what are some of the benefits and challenges to moving one of the programs either at Collin Ranch or GOM? And I want to add here too, because I know some questions have come forward about Hansburger. And we believe that Hansburger is kind of a true regional model because it serves the kind of the southern part of the district. And you'll see that in future slides where we show the feeder schools that are assigned to each of the three SWAS programs right now. So that's why we focused on Collin and GOM.
So when we looked at our considerations to move Collin Ranch over to Toll's, some of the benefits that we had identified was there's additional classroom capacity over at Toll's. Currently, Collin Ranch does have three teachers split between two classrooms. There is an improved capacity at Collin Ranch. The average capacity is 89% over the next three school years. And it's closer to Spanish Springs and Sparks Feeder Elementary School, which is more centrally located.
Want to also do a quick shout out on that first bullet. There was an error there. So instead of three grade levels, it's three teachers at Collin split between the two classrooms. And I get to talk to you a bit about the challenges. So obviously, challenge in looking to move students from one school to another. So right now, as we talked to you earlier, we have 65 projected students that would be attending SWAS at Collin Ranch next school year. Out of those 65, right now, 19 are zoned, 19 students are zoned for Collin Ranch, so they live in that school neighborhood. We also added the notation here that the number will likely change because the gifted and talented department is still working to identify more students that might be coming to our SWAS program. It's still a little bit early, but we're getting closer to final numbers. Another challenge is, unlike Collin, which is a K6 school for now, Toll's is a K5 school. So rising 6th graders, kids that will be in 6th grade next year, could have the option of staying at Collin as 6th graders, most certainly, and would receive gifted and talented support, but not through a SWAS program if it were to move, or would look at going to middle school. So, for example, the Magnet program at Swope. So given the time of year, we're close to February, we're starting to think about next school year, that will be a potential change for some families that were assuming that their child would finish out 6th grade at Collin before they would head off to middle school. We've put here continued length of bus ride for some students. So again, we're super fortunate to be able to have transportation for our SWAS programming. And until we would land on what the final decision would be, not quite sure where students might end up in bus routing. And again, Rick can help talk a little bit about this. But until we know the final set of students that would be attending a program, that's when we start to work on transportation. So there is, we wanted to make sure we noted this, there is a concern that some students that maybe didn't have to take a bus before may now need to take a bus to get to a SWAS program. And that's kind of what that fourth bullet talks about as well. And we'll show you the graphic about the feeder schools for Collin and for GOM. There may need to be just some shifting as we try to be as efficient as we possibly can with transportation.
So now, when we look at the considerations to move GOM SWAS program over to Toll's, it is the same. There's additional classroom capacity that is now over at Toll's. It can improve the capacity over at GOM. The average capacity is 86th percentile projected over the next three years. Again, it is closer to the Spanish Springs Sparks Feeder Elementary Schools, which are more centrally located, and their anticipated minimal impact to transportation routing based on these feeder schools.
Okay, some of the challenges, and some of these you've seen before with the previous slide. So there's the potential of projections right now of 41 students that we would be moving to a new school. And currently, GOM is the zoned school for 15 of those projected students. We also have the other consideration that GOM is still K6, won't move to K5 until the addition to Swope opens up in the 22-23 school year. Continued length of bus ride for some students. So you'll see in just a bit here too that GOM is serving the schools that Whitehead served previously. So there will be continued time that kids are going to be spending on buses when they're coming from Spanish Springs and parts of Sparks as well. And Toll's is more centrally located than perhaps than GOM is, but truly not centrally located. So that's something that we discuss with transportation. And then, again, the fourth bullet is a big one, I think, to consider. So if a family had a student who started in the Whitehead School Within a School program last school year as a 3rd grader, then has now transitioned to GOM as a 4th grader, there's a potential of another new school for 5th grade. And that's definitely something we wanted to make sure we brought to your attention. And then, finally, the rerouting. Again, transportation, we're trying to be as efficient and reduce bus rides as much as we possibly can. So once a final decision is made, we will start working with transportation. But there could be some rerouting of students that maybe we didn't anticipate. I just can't tell you that. This absolutely is not going to happen. We just don't know that yet. Other considerations we wanted to bring forward to you is moving SWAS program from GOM to Toll's is what Rick would characterize as cost-neutral for transportation, in part because there may then now be a need to transport GOM-zoned students to Toll's. They would be outside that mileage, the, you know, yeah. And then, also wanted you to note too that allocations are anticipated to remain the same. We think that, you know, three programs is a very good, healthy number for our SWAS programming, again, noting that we do have the loss of one teacher allocation at Hansburger due to that 6th grade movement.
Okay, so when we are looking at considerations for keeping the SWAS program currently at the locations they are at, some of the benefits are there's less movement for students, and there's consistency with them and the location and the staff and the community. Both Collin Ranch and GOM can handle this capacity until the 6th graders do move out to Swope in the 22-23 school year. All SWAS programs would then serve grades 3 through 5. To move one SWAS program to a more centrally-located area when all 6th graders go to middle school in the 22-23 school year, would all happen, all this movement will happen at the same time. Challenges?
Sure. So again, we're not totally mitigating the length of bus rides for some of our students that's happening right now. And it's not yet, I think, what we would characterize as a regional approach. Again, I think Hansburger, yes. But for the kind of the northern half of the district, not quite yet, which I know you were hoping for.
So we did present this information at the last time we were here. But just to remind you, the current feeder schools for Collin Ranch are the ones listed. I'll just give you a moment to take a peek at that. And then, the current feeder schools for GOM. We also have included in this the Whitehead feeder schools that, once were happening, are now at the GOM location.
And there's Hansburger's feeder schools. Yes, trustee Taylor?
Thank you very much. Billingshurst Middle School feeds to GOM Elementary School?
Did we... Hold on. No?
I mean, to Collin Ranch Elementary School? Yeah, the question is, yeah, I'm sorry, the Collin Ranch. It says Billingshurst is a feeder to Collin Ranch. Is that, was that just a typo?
Typo.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
I was like, wait a minute. Thank you. Okay, and then, the current feeder schools for Hansburger.
So that brings us to, we have two recommendations to bring forward to you. So we've been keeping Interim Superintendent McNeil apprised of this as we've gone along. So that is the first recommendation, is that we keep the three SWAS programs at their current school sites, Collin Ranch, GOM, and Hansburger. And then, you would consider directing staff to continue work to implement a regional approach for program locations in the 2022-2023 school year. All elementary schools go K5 at that time. We've also provided an alternative recommendation, and that is to direct staff to close the SWAS program at GOM and move the program to Toll's for the upcoming school year 2020-2021.
Thank you. Would that also then theoretically be also for the 21-22 school year?
Yes.
So it would be for the next two years?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I know we do have quite a bit of public comment on this one too.
If I could ask, if we go back up to the heat map slide, and if we could just orient everybody to where Toll's is on that heat map, just by way of information. Can anybody point? everybody to where Tolls is on that heat map, just by way of information, can anybody point to?
I can't see it from here. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Yep. Okay, just, I know we were talking about it being more centrally located, and it is, but I think it's useful to see how it relates to our heat map. So, thank you. Thank you, President Raymond, for that finger pointer.
Very good job, Vanna.
Vanna?
Yeah, Vanna. All right, well, let's, if my fellow trustees will agree, we can move forward with our public comment, and then ask any further questions or make comments.
Wyatt Killian?
I'm Wyatt Killian, and I go to the Roy GOM SWAS program. And I'm up here because of the bus ride, it's an hour and 15 minutes from me from, from Spanish Springs to Roy GOM. And there's not really anything you can do on the bus except read or maybe talk to the people who aren't on their phones, which most of them are. And then, also, because why you shouldn't move it to the, move it to a closer location to Sparks and Spanish Springs, because there, I'm not the only one who's like an hour bus ride from everywhere else. So, and other kids, there are other kids who are, who could have gone, but probably don't get to go because it's too far away. So, I guess that's it.
And telling them how hard it is when you get home from school day.
And then, because Ms. Karpchuk gives me, gives me a good amount of homework, but it's more, it's better. It's better now. It's better in second grade and all that. It's really hard to complete it because of, I get home at like 5:00 or 5:30. And that's it.
Great job. Thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in there through a long meeting.
Nicole Killian?
My name is Nicole Killian. I am obviously his mom. The first district-sponsored informational session we went to prior to Wyatt's first session in SWAS was, one of the main goals was stability. And if the school district moves him again, it's going to be his 5th grade year, and it'll be his 3rd school in his many years in SWAS. The district decided to close down the Sparks location, leaving the 3 remaining SWAS programs in the most affluent parts of town, 2 of which are less than 3 miles from each other, all 3 of which are in the Reno ZIP code. This year, our son has been and will continue riding the bus for 2 and 1/2 hours a day, arriving home close to 5:00 PM. Hurry up and get to soccer practice, hurry up and get homework completed, dinner, shower, hurry up and wind down so you can hurry up and go to bed, start all over tomorrow. What the district doesn't see is the real emotional toll this has taken on our 9, I'm sorry, on our 9-year-old. And how many times we have revisited the idea of him returning to Spanish Springs Elementary because of this, and at what cost? His option is to be completely bored and unchallenged in school, or be bored on a bus for 2 and 1/2 hours a day while his friends are on his phones, leaving him little downtime to be a kid. Last year, I voiced my concerns and was told after I stepped down, "To be clear, GT services are still offered at their zoned schools. 150 minutes a day, once a week, is hardly comparable to the SWAS education these kids are receiving, and shame on you for suggesting so." The changes the district has made and are proposing to make continue to serve only Reno. Last I checked, Sparks is still part of the Washoe County School District regardless of the heat map. Why hasn't the district considered Bowhatch? Or if it has, why are we not considering any Sparks ZIP code for that matter? Diedrichson, Rita Cannon, Sepulveda, any of them? Why are we not considering those schools as well? Moving SWAS to Sparks location would be equitable, a regional approach, as well as bringing SWAS back to the area that the district has previously cut off. Moving the SWAS program to any other Reno area code does not fit the directive given to the board in the fall. Moving GOM or Collin to the Tolls area school is a mere 3.3 and 2.7 miles respectively. Is that closer technically? Is that regional? Absolutely not, so why are we even considering that? This move would at best change our son's commute from 2 and 1/2 hours a day to probably 2 hours a day, which is hardly worth doing. This is not equitable or even regionable, regional. The majority of the SWAS academics is isolated within itself, unrelated to where this is located. The equitability of the location is not going to change the education of these kids. Wyatt was moved from Jerry Whitehead last year. He had PE, he had art, he had a robust library, and he got as many books out of that library as he does here at GOM. Does he love GOM? Absolutely. Does he love his teacher? Absolutely. The challenge here is the emotional fallout from him when he's on a bus for 2 and 1/2 hours a day. And us having to deal with that is absolutely heartbreaking as a parent. I am confident that you as a board can find 3 schools in this district that equally serve every part of this district, including Sparks, because this is not acceptable. A 2 and 1/2 hour bus ride is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Mona Melton?
Hello, my name is Mona Melton. I taught in the SWAS program for 20 years. During that time, I earned my master's degree in counseling and educational psychology and also my national board certification. I just retired at the end of last school year. The SWAS program began as a single 4, 5, 6 classroom at Sarah Winameka Elementary School. That setting worked well. Over the years, the program expanded into several locations and the Winameka program moved to Mount Rose. That was not an ideal school placement, as neither the students nor the parents were appreciated in the situation at that time. In an effort to manage student behavior, some aspects of the school climate felt militaristic, and I saw students called down for wearing sunglasses in the hall or bobbing their heads while walking. During the social lunch period, the whole student body was required to put heads down on tables for extended periods of time if it didn't stay nearly silent. Proactive SWAS parents were characteristically vocal about issues they were passionate about, and the administration was not accustomed to that level of parental involvement or influence. The students expected to have a voice as well. In that setting, their opinions weren't welcomed. The SWAS students and parents can truly be a great asset, but that was not the way it played out at Mount Rose. It just wasn't the right match. The program was then moved to Roy GOM, where I taught for the last 9 years. SWAS has the potential to provide a true school home for these students, and GOM has provided an ideal environment. The school match for the SWAS students couldn't have been better. Unfortunately, many SWAS students have been isolated and even ostracized in their zoned schools and home classrooms. SWAS students and even SWAS classrooms can be considered tall poppies. As people survey the field, they stand out as being different from the greater group. Different doesn't make it easy when you're a SWAS student in a school environment where there are fewer intellectual peers or an administrator that doesn't understand you. It can draw ongoing misunderstanding at minimum, and even ridicule and exclusion. On a school playground or in a lunchroom setting, this cannot be effectively ameliorated by school personnel. The intention of the School Within a School program is for students to have alternative programming while being truly assimilated into the school community. This has been effectively done at GOM, but can be difficult to achieve in a less accommodating environment. If a SWAS classroom is different enough from the general student body, even though the potential exists for them to make a contribution in any school setting, SWAS students can also be resented and targeted, as can their parents. GOM is an ideal situation. SWAS students are by nature highly sensitive, so school transitions should be minimized. They can be severely affected by disruptions in their school placement and need stability in their school environment. In my 20 years of teaching SWAS, I had only 2 students leave my classroom. They were young and had difficulty making the transition from their zoned schools. With even younger 3rd grade students there, they need a stable base. We risk losing students who desperately need specialized services in SWAS when we add undue stress by creating unnecessary school moves. Stay with what is working for these students until there's a completely developed plan to provide services in other locations that will appreciably make a difference in their transportation needs. Let's do what's best for these students now and down the road. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the district.
Brian Hicks?
My name is Brian Hicks, and on behalf of my daughter Eva and with my wife, Crystal Hicks, we would encourage the board to reconsider removing the SWAS program from Roy GOM Elementary School for the following reasons. The students attending the Roy GOM program have already been impacted by this year's move to, by this year's removal of the Whitehead program. That's been talked about previously, so I won't waste any more time there, but that is certainly, those consecutive moves would be very detrimental to our children. SWAS is fit with Roy GOM's social environment. Roy GOM is a better fit for the students that attend the SWAS program due to the higher number of intellectual peers to associate with in and out of the program. This results in higher acceptance, less potential for bullying, and a higher overall sense of acceptance and belonging for the SWAS children. The overall school performance together with added enrichment activities is a much better match for SWAS kids. Roy GOM has demonstrated this by consistently being recognized as a 5-star school and as a blue ribbon school, as we all know. And it is consistently ranked in the top 10 elementary schools statewide, year after year. This is precisely the kind of environment that aids in challenging highly gifted students to perform at their best, as well as exercise their needed avenues, exercise other needed avenues of their education. Roy GOM offers additional programs and support that is not available at most other schools within the district. Programs include Meet the Master's Art Program, their year-round PE programs, music, which also offers additional extracurricular opportunities for students, and extended library hours and access, among other things. The parental involvement and volunteer rate at Roy GOM Elementary are also very high, which benefits all students. The purpose of moving to Tolls does not offer any additional ease of access to children who live in Sparks North Valleys or east of I-580. Calculated travel times from these areas result in negligible gains at best. We live in Sparks, and our daughter qualifies for transportation to Roy GOM. However, we must drive her, we must drive her and are unable to take advantage of said transportation because siblings are not allowed to use the same bus. Due to this, her brother and sister must be transported separately by us. The overall education and opportunities that Eva has at Roy GOM is well worth the time and sacrifices involved in getting them to the school. By simply opening transportation up to varianced siblings, you would provide access to a wider range of SWAS and SWAS eligible students that would be otherwise unable to attend due to the lack of transportation. We appreciate the board's consideration of this matter and hope that the needs of this historically underserved and at-risk population will be at the center of your decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Hernandez?
Elaine Simpson? My name is Elaine Simpson. My son attends Roy GOM. He is a 3rd grader. He is in his first year at this program. We are new to Reno, we are new to the Washoe School District, and new to SWAS. I was not aware of the budget issues and possible movement of this program. I don't think I would put him in or started him this year because he is highly sensitive. Change isn't his best friend, and I would want it to settle, because I also have another daughter who could be possibly entering into these programs. Breaks my heart that Wyatt has to ride a 90-minute bus ride. I too cannot take advantage of said bus services because I live in Northwest, I'm actually closer to GOM, but my child would still need to be on the bus for 90 minutes to go to school. So, I feel like we need to revisit at least the bus transportation and see if there's some other creative ways that we could service these students. I don't want my child to go to 3 different schools, you know, starting after this year. So, I implore you to take your time on this decision. Ideally, I would like to have parents involved in a committee on this. I want the teachers of the SWAS program, I want the principal to be involved in this. The kids are what we're trying to all do, and I feel like parents are almost pitted against each other because we have to advocate for our students, and I don't want to be against another parent. I want students to have all the equal opportunity. So, I too request that a regional placement be solidified, and that a move to Tolls is not a consideration. Our students will learn, lose services, I've written about this, of what they will lose. What I did not include is also after-school services that my son participates in, especially that help foster the learning of the gifted mind. And so, I just hope that, you know, we stop, we take the time, we use the data. Research shows that consistency for our kids is what helps them excel, and I feel like the teachers and the principals who are with them every single day should have a voice and help make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon McAlson?
Hello, thank you guys for having us tonight. So, this was the primary agenda item that I was intending to discuss. And when we took, look at the initial interim superintendent recommendation, keeping the SWAS program at the current sites for the next 2 school years, it doesn't help with the transportation difficulties that have been discussed, but I don't necessarily think that the move, the alternative recommendation is going to aid in that. When you look at the 3 bullet points of really why this conversation came about in August, it seems equal access to programming is a big one. And the Sparks location being closed, I wasn't involved in that current conversation. I have a son who will be hopefully entering the program next year at GOM Elementary. We moved him to that school because we thought it would be appropriate for him to eventually attend the SWAS program. If you have one of these kids, as has been mentioned, it's really hard for them to integrate socially. And he's doing okay, but I definitely think this program will help him just find peers, honestly, just make friends. So, sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional, but I don't think the alternative recommendation is going to provide equal access to programming. Whereas, if you wait the 2 years, if you look at the numbers from the Hunsburger Elementary that dropped significantly to where a teacher allocation actually has come away from there, if you wait 2 years until 6th grade isn't going to be at Collin Ranch or GOM as it is, then you really will have probably more teacher allocations that you could at that time, after much conversation and discussion, move back to having a Sparks location because you'll have the resources. I think that that would be kind of, if you go with the first recommendation, something that could be talked about over the next 2 years, in having a 4th site again, because it seemed like low enrollment, but that was the right location for it, or the right area, maybe a different school. And then the cost efficiencies busing, but facility capacity, I think unless our schools, which have really successful programs right now, are at a capacity that can't allow it, I don't think moving to a location where there's much fewer kids who qualify for these services is an appropriate move, because, you know, you're looking at 15 out of the 30 kids are zoned for Roy GOM this year, 15 out of the 33, but all 33 of those will have to be bused if you move them, or 41 projected. So, I think that if we go with the first recommendation, that gives some time to consider all these other ideas, and hopefully reopen a 4th location in an area that is appropriate with the resources we'll have when these 6th grades aren't at the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Karpchuk?
President and the trustees and Dr. McNeil and the staff. I have the privilege, I'm, I'm sorry, for the record, I'm Kelly Karpchuk. I have the privilege, sorry, I have, I've been teaching all day, sorry. I have the privilege of being the 3, 4 SWAS teacher at GOM Elementary School. This is my 3rd year at GOM. I've been teaching gifted students for 9 years, so I have a little bit of background to back up some of the things that I'm going to talk about. For GOM, I need to, I know it's been mentioned that it's a blue ribbon school. We also provide 2 art classes, which are really a necessity for SWAS students to be able to express that creativity that isn't always allowed within a curriculum. able to express that creativity that isn't always allowed within a curriculum, you know, at the level at which these kids are learning, the arts. Also, we have the full-time PE, which I know other schools don't offer. I do work closely with our librarian. She is very, very generous in working with me and the other SWAS teacher in making sure that we have the resources. We have the books. Our kids get a little more extra library time because they're working on project-based learning. They are doing research, and they are working at a much more accelerated level. She is also open during the summer, which I think is a real benefit to the students at Gom, not just SWAS students, but all students. And that plays a big, big part in their reading, their research, their learning, their inquisition. We also have a very large play area where the kids can run, and there are simultaneous games going on, which also fosters a great sense of student community. And we do have the numbers to kind of back up not moving those children to another school. Students need that art and creativity. The one thing that really concerns me as a teacher of these students for this long is that some of these second graders went to their zone school. They're going to, they went to Whitehead for third grade, they're coming to Gom for fourth grade, you may move them to Tolls for fifth grade, and then they're going to go to a middle school. I don't understand how that promotes our social, emotional well-being. I don't understand how that promotes school-community relationships with teachers, with other members of our staff, including those specials that they attend. And I don't see how that promotes the friendships that, as parents have indicated, are a struggle for many of them. I'm concerned about us going to a K-5 school at this time, and I've expressed that at other times, in that I teach three levels of math in the 3-4 SWAS classroom, in a 90-minute block, expecting to scaffold and teach mastery to the students that are in my classroom. And I don't know if I have three grade levels, how many grade levels I would be teaching. I'll accept any challenge, but I really want what's best for the children. So I know I'm running out of time, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, and thank you for staying with us after a long day of teaching. I appreciate it. I know, too soon to count, don't count.
Adam and Laney Jaffe.
Hi, I'm Adam Jaffe, and this is my wife Laney. And we have a child in the SWAS program, and pretty much all the previous speakers have had some great ideas. I don't have a lot extra to add besides to mirror what they have said. Given the choice, we would hope that the board would take the first choice as far as not making rash decisions and move Gom to Tolls for the variety of reasons that these guys have talked about, such as stability. And also, one of the speakers had a really good point, in another two years, with our growth that we've got, it wouldn't be out of the question to be able to put the place, put another, maybe Whitehead back at, in Sparks for more of a true regional type of system, which I, you know, everybody's going for. So, and also I want to say just the quality of Gom and the teachers there and the facilities, the parent participation, I think, you know, I think most folks that have gone there and have their kids gone there, whether they be in the zone or from other zones, would agree with that. And for these type of kids, it's stability is really important. Anything to add?
Yeah, and just touching on some of the similar things that other people have talked about. So Whitehead is actually not moving twice, it's three times. It's from Whitehead to Gom, from Gom to Tolls, and then to Tolls to Magnet. That's three times, and that's awful for those kids. We are zoned for Gom, but they're our family, and to put the kids through that, you know, these are very special kids that really need stability, and it breaks my heart. I don't think Tolls is a good alternative. It's three miles away from Gom. You know, it's not centrally, it's not a regional approach. I don't think it's centrally located for our Sparks friends, and I'm hoping that with a little more time, we could find a better solution and not move these kids, you know, three times for three years. But thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Nit Hernandez.
I'm actually not prepared to speak because I thought I was going to recruit my friend, who is not afraid of public speaking as much as I am. I thought I came here to advocate for my sons and for the SWAS students at Huntsburger. It sounds like Huntsburger is safe, and so I thank you for the recommendation for keeping it there, and we feel very lucky. But on the other hand, there are other students who are not as lucky, so I'm also here to advocate for Mike and for other students who do not, who are not as lucky to be more centrally located to the SWAS programs. I know that I didn't always, I'm an immigrant child, and my dad worked hard to support the family. My mom stayed home to take care of all of us, and there was a lot, there were a lot of us. There were a lot of activities that we missed, extracurricular activities, baseball, violin, soccer, whatever it is, that we didn't have the opportunity. And if any one of us, my siblings, got into SWAS, if there was a SWAS program then, we wouldn't have gotten, we wouldn't have attended because my parents did not have the resources, meaning they did not understand that maybe there could be bus transportations, or maybe they didn't even understand that the child got into a gifted program. So I'm urging you is not to take away the fundings for the SWAS program, not to take away fundings for any school programs. School is expensive, keep it that way. That's what it takes to, to, to breed a good, you know, I guess, good humans. Bring them into this world, I guess, is not, is not cheap. So I urge you to continue to keep the fundings for the school programs and to encourage you to consider a fourth location in a more, a location perhaps in Sparks, in a more equitable place where people of all color and race and income can have access to the SWAS program and the GATE program. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to give you one last chance, if there's anybody out there that would like to make public comment before we move on. Colleen, okay. Well, thank you both, Deborah and Sherry, for this presentation and all the hard work that went into it. And I know you spent a lot of time gathering data and looking at our options. I requested this agenda item. I, you know, I think I can speak for everyone about how painful it was to make the decision last year to close Whitehead. And it was not something that, you know, we did without great consideration and pause and thinking about the impacts. You know, I think for us, this is unfortunately comes down to resources and funding, and we had to make hard decisions last year to work with a very large budget deficit at the time that we were able to make smaller by making those hard decisions. And unfortunately, over the years, this is just one example of the tough decisions we've had to make. You know, we've talked earlier today about extending the walk zones and some of the other things we've had to do. And when, I think, after that decision was made, my hope was, as was stated in the motion at the time, to look more at this regional model. And, you know, I think having, you know, this information provided to us today and kind of better understanding the timing of where we are with everything, although I would have liked to have found a solution that made an impact on those families that are on, you know, the, in the Spanish Springs area or are on the bus for these lengthy periods, this isn't the solution, I don't think, that I was hoping for in Tolls. I think it doesn't quite fit the goal of reducing that travel time for our students, and it doesn't really, as you've stated, fit a regional model. And I also don't think, at the time last year, I fully, you know, thought about the impact that Swope would have not having a sixth grade for this, this time period when other sixth grades have moved to middle school, and then that, you know, change in two years and what that looks like for the feeder schools. So although I, again, appreciate all the work, I think there's more work to do, and I think there's more that we need to look at. You know, as I said, this is a resource issue, and I can't sit here today after this presentation and say that Gom's going to always have a SWAS program, or Collin Ranch is always going to have a SWAS program, and that that program won't ever move, we're just going to add a new one, because for right now, we don't have those resources. I think another unknown that actually the interim superintendent reminded me of is just the unknown of funding at the state level that we, as we talked about earlier today, we've talked about so many things tonight, with a new funding formula model that the state is looking at, and kind of how the distribution of funds is going to be spread out across the state. There's still some unknowns about what our funding for GT is going to look like in the future, and so I think that's another unknown. The only request I would have at this point is that we try to find a solution where we can give families as much notice as possible and not be in a situation where we're making a decision in the spring that would impact families in the fall. If there's any way that we can have a whole school year of kind of transition time where families would be aware that there might be a change, because I definitely, I think, you know, as a family, then that gives you the option, if you have the means and the, you know, the opportunity to move yourself, you know, it gives you that option, but it also just, the more time that families have, I think, to kind of think about these things and how it's going to, you know, impact the family, the better. So I also just want to say that I don't, I don't like the idea too of making a change that would impact those Whitehead families with three different moves in such a short period of time. Again, I wish we could have found a solution to reduce their, their travel time, but I just don't think that we're there yet, and I don't want to rush a decision. I think we need to wait for Swope. So off of my little spiel, and I'll pass it on to anyone who's ready. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, President Raymond. First of all, I thank you staff for your work, because this is not an easy thing to do. It can't be, it wasn't easy this time a year ago, and guess what, a year later, it isn't any easier. It isn't. And certainly thank you to the families that, we're supposed to be here at 9 o'clock, and you aren't. So thank you for, for coming and staying and sharing your thoughts. I'll just do a quick brain dump. I guess the question for staff was, was a school, well, some of these questions don't matter, because at the end of the day, Tolls isn't the answer. It doesn't address the, you know, some of the primary concerns. It doesn't give us the regionality that the board asked for. It doesn't help young students like, I believe, Mike, right, who's spending a lot, was it Mike? Wyatt, I'm sorry Wyatt, I'm sorry Wyatt. That hat looks like a Wyatt, I should have known that. It doesn't address that, I mean, that's a real, that's a real issue, it doesn't address that. I mean, maybe he picks up 10 minutes, you know, 15 minutes each way or so on, so it doesn't make sense to do all of the upheaval, if you will, for students that live in other parts of the district that may pick up 10 minutes, 15, maybe five, but they're still on the bus way too long. And I mean, I don't know why we couldn't have come up with another solution. I know that you looked, and I looked at everyone that you spoke with, I looked through it again, so it isn't as though the work wasn't thorough. But we just, we just aren't there yet. To me, the, what remains in terms of all the things that we heard on tonight, I mean, too many moves of the Whiteheads hit for the students that start at Whitehead. I do think we need to do some work on the sibling issue. Some of the emails that we got talked about siblings not being able to get variances. And then the gentleman that spoke tonight about siblings not being able to ride the bus, I don't know what the answer is to that, but that seems, you know, kind of, I'm just going to get in my car and ride behind the bus and take my kid? I mean, that doesn't, that's what I envision in my mind. Well, you can't get on, I'm just going to drive with you. I mean, we've, there's got to be, there's got to, Rick, help me, man, help, help me, help me. There's got to be a better solution to that. You can come in the middle, I have a couple more comments, but you go ahead on this one.
Are you sure?
Please.
You're on a roll.
It's timely. I'm good at picking it back up, it's okay.
The issue with variance transportation is a district-wide issue. It's not just a SWAS program issue, because if you're advocating to allow variance transportation, then you have to allow it for all students who are variance to other schools. So, i.e. if I've got a student who, for whatever reason, is variance to, they live in the Cold Springs area, but they're variance over to the south end of town for whatever reason, say they want to go to Brown, or their parents work in that area or whatever, providing transportation, that would be, we'd have to do that for all those types of students. Now, from the aspect of the programming piece, is there a potential that something could be done? Possibility, but then we have to look at, who are we excluding from that standpoint on variance transportation? And how far do you want to take that? Because again, that's going to be a board policy decision, because our policy is, we don't provide transportation for variance students out of zone, for general education. So.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that, and that would perhaps should be something that we should have a conversation about at the board level, for those that are in specialized programs, and there may not be an answer to it. But this is, this is, no, that, no, I appreciate it. There may not be an answer to it, but I do think that having a conversation about it would be noteworthy. Just as I, as I go on, bottom line, what I would, I would love to, I don't think we move kids now, I don't think, I don't think we move them to Tolls, and if we can't have a regional approach now, I don't think we move kids now, for all the reasons of moving several times. But maybe, maybe something to consider is there a way that we can cut the transportation down, a more direct route or something, I don't know. But I just can't, I just can't rest back on, well, it's okay to ride the bus for two and a half hours a day. That's just, that's, my heart bleeds for Wyatt and other friends and colleagues of his and those like him that, that are in that kind of a situation, when it's really by no, they can't really control that. So that may also be something to, for us to consider. Is there anything else we might be able to do on the transportation end? But my vote will be to go with the interim superintendent's recommendation, because moving to Tolls is not the answer, but there are many more answers that we need to take the time to do that. But in the interim, is there anything that we can do for those SWAS students that are on that bus ride for so long because we couldn't come up with a regional solution? That's, that's just, that's my brain dump.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Can, can you all refresh us, what is roughly the cost of a SWAS program? Do roughly?
Well, it's going to depend on the number of FTEs, the number of teachers, and then the number of students. So one FTE is about 65,000 for a teacher.
And, and we typically have two teachers in a SWAS program minimum, depending on the number of, yeah, so we're looking at 130,000 plus.
Plus transportation.
Plus transportation.
Yeah, I also ask, plus materials, curriculum, goodness help me with what else we're staffing our classrooms with.
We actually.
Robotics.
Yeah, so all the resources that go into a regular gen ed classroom, we also have to supply for our SWAS classrooms.
I'm just, I, it pains me as well to think of all the Wyatts that have, would have to, I agree that Tolls is not the solution, and I really appreciate how much you all have struggled with trying to find a solution. And it just pains me to think of all those kids having to wait until the 22, 23 school year for us to have a solution. I'm just wondering if there's any possibility, and because I know the funding formula is going to have a huge impact on this and would have a huge impact on our resource allocations, I'm just wondering if we, if there's any way I'm just wondering if we, if there's any way we could move that up to the 21, 22 school year and find a Sparks location contingent upon whether the funding formula would allow for us to provide a fourth location in that school year. I know I'm adding all kinds of, you know, challenges, but I just, I, we aren't doing the best for these kids. I, I know, we all know that and it's always a resource issue. These are special kids and I just, yeah, I'm just wondering if that's, if that's something we could explore. I agree, the 22, 23 is special because of the move of sixth graders. There's, there's that. I just hate to have those kids who are in one of the fastest growing parts of our region having to, having to be disadvantaged. So just if we could, I don't know, and that's certainly up to you interim superintendent, but is, if there's a possibility of a, of a Sparks location for 21, 22 with the, with the notion that it would be contingent on whether funding formula allocations would give us any daylight to do that?
If, if I, if I may, excuse me, thank you, Madam President. It may be, I certainly, one thing on my notes that I didn't say is I'm also really concerned about the equity issue. That's, that's, that's big. That's one of the driving principles, one of the driving values in, in our district and we aren't serving those students. And I know you did everything you could to work it out. Don't, please don't hear me saying that you didn't, I, I recognize that. And so maybe if, I guess I go back to, you know, a, a bus directly would be cheaper than the, than the program. And it wouldn't be contingent upon what happens because we know in two years, we can really do what's needed to do and the, the resource will know where we are from a funding standpoint and that might be the quickest, easiest way to kind of, just, just again, just, I'm with you, I know I'm muddy in the water and all that other stuff, but I, I just don't, I just don't like the, the, the transportation that we really can't, haven't, can't do much about, but.
Well, there's always Uber. No, I'm serious. I mean, you know.
It's illegal to Uber kids under 18.
Thank you very much.
It's illegal to Uber kids under 18.
Well, maybe, well, who knows? I'm just brainstorming here, just brainstorming.
What about a private shuttle or something that we can fundraise for to, you know, that's not going to be on the report.
Yeah. I'm sorry, the, unfortunately Nevada state law doesn't allow for productive collaborative conversations like this in a public meeting.
Security, no, I'm kidding.
I, I don't know who was first, but I'll go to trustee Minetta.
Oh, I kind of agree with what trustee Simon Holland is suggesting. Being a Sparks representative, I've been to lots of Sparks schools and I'm always asking the principals, would you have room for SWAS here? And they, I can't tell you how many of them said, oh, yeah. Now, not that they know, you know, what's going down the pike, not that the principals know, but, but they're, I mean, there are schools there that have lost their sixth grade and they have empty classrooms and Sepulveda is right in the middle. Maxwell, you know, there's just so much and I know that there's just other stuff I don't know about, but there's got to be someplace much more central for Sparks.
May I jump in there? So again, Deborah Byers-Dorf, so I have a handy dandy little chart here that shows us, shows me a projection. So we, I mean, we, I don't think I have to convince you that we went school by school by school by school looking at capacity, absolutely understanding the concerns. And then I'll remind you too, when we made the decision to shut the program at Whitehead, 13 students, one teacher, we were within ratios. We weren't going to be able to keep the second teacher. We had a brief conversation about that. We feel very strongly, and Sheri Jump, and she can give it to you in, in much more detail than I'll be able to, that the, the program needs to have two teachers. The, the strength of the program, and when I think about equitable, equitable access, a student in a Whitehead program needs those, yeah, yeah, a, a, as much as we possibly can. So we've talked about that as well. So, so in the thought about four programs, and if you think back on the slide that we showed you earlier this evening about the, the, the number of students, it's a very small percentage. I, I don't see the program growing, now, I could be wrong, I, I don't have a crystal ball, growing leaps and bounds of the number of students that would be eligible for SWAS, highly profoundly gifted students, that a fourth program would be needed to, to, just to handle the, the sheer numbers. So if we were looking at a, a fourth program in, in, back in the Sparks area, they're very likely it's going to be the conversation about exceptions or additional resources to make sure that that program is equal to what's at GOM, what's at Collin and what's at, at Hansburger. So just, just want to make sure that's on your radar, so.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I have a question for, for Rick, if you want to. My question is, is the reason that Wyatt and the other students are on the bus for so long, is it because that one bus is stopping at multiple locations to pick up students and that's what's adding the time? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. For the record, Rick Martin, Director of Transportation, and you are correct. That is what the situation is, is because we are picking up students at their schools that they are zoned for to transport them to the school, their SWAS school. So i.e. that would be like picking up at Spanish Springs and then coming in and possibly picking up at Dietrichson, Whitehead, picking up some other students, say in the Sparks area and maybe along the corridor in Reno.
Okay. So to me, I mean, I think we all agree that, you know, a regional approach, one year, two or three years from now is what we're, what we're looking for. But in the short term, I'm just trying to think, in the short term, wouldn't it make sense to have a school bus or have this school bus go to a one spot and have the parents from all these different locations drive their students to that one place to get on the bus and then the bus does a straight shot to GOM? Wouldn't that cut down significantly on the time?
Yeah, correct. That would. From that standpoint, part of our issue on some of those aspects is some of those parents can't get their students to that one location. Their students may be walking to their school, their zone school to get on the SWAS bus and go. So there are some of those logistic issues that we would have to address and look at and how can we provide for that? I mean, it's a, it's a concept that we can look at and, and consider and work through some of those logistic issues. But maybe we can come up with something that's, you know, much more beneficial and somewhat productive for everybody.
And I think that it would be worth looking at if, maybe not one, just one location, maybe the bus goes to just two locations that parents are coming from at slightly different times and then, then it can do the straight shot. I'm just trying to think, what can we do for the students for the next school year that's a little, that cuts down the driving time for them while we work on this regional approach that we hope to implement one year from now or two years from now, depending on funding and other things? So that's what I got.
Well, I would be concerned about the equity issue in that because there's, there's some, there's some kids walk to their, or their parents, they, they get to their zone schools and to go to further than that, some parents just aren't going to be available. I think it'd be, I would, I would think a, a more equitable approach would be, can we add another bus or two and then this bus is only going to these schools, this bus is only going to these schools and to make it a more direct route and cut that time, cut an hour off of that time or something, 45 minutes or something, but to ask parents to take their kids somewhere, that, that's, that's an equity issue.
Well, correct. And then from that standpoint, we, you know, we do have some limitations in those areas. We can look at some aspects of possibly adding a bus or two to assist in that area. Again, it's logistics, most of our buses are connected to other schools that they're transporting, so it's, it's again, just the issue of being able to break the puzzle apart and put it back together where it fits. So, you know, but we're willing to look at that and see. Yeah.
Dr. McNeil.
So first of all, I want to just thank the entire staff for working on this. This, as you know, has taken a huge quantity of time, deep thinking time, and I think this board absolutely understands that this was not a decision that was lightly taken by the board or even as when I was the deputy superintendent and we had to bring you this recommendation to close Whitehead. Nobody wants a child on a bus for two and a half hours. That's not optimum. That being said, at the end of the day, this is going to come down to a resource issue and a priority issue as far as where are the budget priorities for the board? I mean, that, that's what it is at the end of the day and I know that you all know that. As well as the Commission on Per-Pupil Funding does greatly concern me because all the conversations that we have had, we have no idea how the GT gifted and talented program is going to be weighted with that funding formula. And I am significantly concerned about the reduction of GT funding that our district may face with this. So I would like the board to consider the interim superintendent's recommendation with the caveat that we would come back on the approval of the FY '21 budget, once we know what the commission is going to be doing, with some possible options for transportation, but knowing that that is going to be a cost as well. And I did not say that in a motion, so that is going to be up to you all to.
You can't make it. Thank you very much. Trustee Cotto.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, very helpful. I think we all, we all agree, Tolls isn't, isn't the issue. Frankly, it would be a decision we would probably revisit in a year or two to move it again because Tolls doesn't solve the problem. My, my concern is waiting two more years and I can wait a year until we figure out what the funding's going to look like, but waiting two years to me doesn't seem necessary. I understand the Swope issue, but Swope getting sixth graders does not impact Sparks or Spanish Springs. The Sparks or Spanish Springs issues, we are, we know what they're going to be when Bowhatch opens in August and there isn't another school up there that's being planned or built right now. So while Swope changes the game in the South Reno area, West Reno, it doesn't impact Sparks or Spanish Springs, so I don't think we need to wait two years. I'm good with coming back this summer, coming back next fall for '21, '22, but personally I wouldn't support '22, '23 and I, I wouldn't support Tolls. The Sparks and Spanish Springs area should have one. I understand we can't have four, but Sparks and Spanish Springs should at least have one of the three. That's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cotto. I'm just want to clarify, so you think that you would like to add a whole nother program and keep one at GOM, but also add one in Sparks?
No, I, I'm saying that I understand we still have to keep it at three programs, but one of the three should be in the Sparks area.
Okay.
Not, not adding a.
We've all agreed on, I think.
Yeah, but I don't think we should wait until '22, '23 then to figure it out. We're just kicking the can down the road for two more years and that, that's a long time.
It is. I think the, if I could just, my understanding of why Swope does impact Sparks in this case is that the SWAS students that are attending Roy GOM have the ability to stay there through sixth grade because the, Roy GOM Elementary School will have sixth grade until Swope Middle School and Collin Ranch will both have sixth grade until Swope Middle School's expansion is completed. And so any student that is at Roy GOM for SWAS has the ability to stay there through sixth grade until, and I, and I think many parents have chosen to keep their student at Roy GOM for sixth grade SWAS when they actually even have the opportunity to send them to a magnet program at a middle school because they like Roy GOM, they like being in an elementary school for sixth grade. So that's my understanding of why it does matter and why we would have to wait or why the, my recommendation would be to wait until Swope is open. That doesn't fix, like I said, the, the Sparks issue, but I do like the superintendent's idea about coming back when we know more about the budget to just look differently at transportation. And then I do think, you know, the, the possibilities in two years in Sparks could look differently than they do now. I think it's worth considering then, but am I wrong in the Swope?
Again, Deborah Byers-Dorf, yes, trustee Raymond, that was our thinking, that when, again, all elementaries go K5, that movement happens, there is no more sixth grade at those two schools, students could go to, the sixth graders would go to Magnet at that point. And then also as well, because similar to what you saw in the reduction in FTEs at Hansburger, same thing's going to happen at Collin and the same thing's going to happen at GOM, likely, we would go down to, likely, two teachers at, at both of those sites. Correct?
Sheri D. Martino for the record, yes, that is correct.
And that would be in line with what we, again, what the, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. That would be in line with, we would think that would be our, the, that the percentage of our students in elementary school that are highly profoundly gifted, we, we would be right in line with that.
So when those schools reduce in, in population because the sixth grades move on, the, the SWAS sixth graders move on to the Magnet program or middle school, general middle school, and those FTEs, do they move with the students to the Magnet program or do they become available to move, do, can we then take those extra FTEs that were at sixth grade SWAS at Collin and GOM and move them to the north possibly and keep the other ones? Am I making sense?
Yes, you are, President Raymond. So do the FTEs move not necessarily the way you're presenting it? We do have to look at capacity for the schools for our Magnet program as well. So for example, we are losing the one teacher at Hansburger, but luckily for us, she is moving over to the brand new school at Marcy Hurst to be a GT teacher there. So there is movement, but once we lose the allocation at the SWAS program, I try to reabsorb them somewhere in the program, but it is not always possible to do.
Just real quick, the Magnet program, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheri, please, the Magnet program is an application program? In other words?
Yes.
If I am in SWAS, I don't necessarily go to the Magnet program?
That is correct. So with the Magnet program, it is an application process that is open to all identified GT students and they have to go through the matrix that we have, looking at their cognitive score, looking at their grades, because we want to make sure they're going to be successful in a very rigorous program and so that they can be prepared for the high school level because they're going to be graduating that Magnet program two years above in mathematics and at least one year above grade level in the science and social studies. So we do carefully look and screen the students for success.
Thank you. And just to clarify too, the Magnet program does not provide transportation to its students?
That is correct. We only provide the transportation for the SWAS program.
For the SWAS program. And I think, you know, as a, as a board, I hope it's been clear to everyone how committed we are to the SWAS program and GT. You know, I think our board policy speaks to that, but also just hopefully in our actions. Our district is really special and unique and it's offering of SWAS at the elementary level and that's not something you find everywhere and, and, you know, I'm, I'm proud that we've been able to find a way to, to have this program and that we can offer transportation to the students that are able to be part of the program. I think there's, you know, obviously some transportation kinks that we need to work out though, so. All right. I think it's time to see if we're ready for a motion. Vice President Taylor.
My light's on, I'm ready, it's late.
Get us out of here.
I move that the Board of Trustees keeps the, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees keeps the three SWAS programs at their current school sites for the 2020, '21 and 2021, '22 school years and direct staff to continue work to implement a regional approach for program locations for the '22, '23 school year and direct staff to bring back a, um, transportation options that will be, that can begin in the 2021 and '22, and '21, '22 school year.
So 2020, 2021, did you say?
Yes, bring back transportation options that we can look at that could begin in the fall. Wyatt needs some help.
I have a motion by Vice President Taylor. Does anyone wanna second that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by trustee Kelly.
Can I, for a discussion, I just wanted to clarify with Dr. McNeil. Will we know enough in terms of the budgeting to be able to consider transportation options?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we will. So I, I think it's something, though, that we need to be bringing up at your board work sessions on the February 25th and then at March 31st. I think that these should be included as points to, to talk about as far as some transportation. And I'm looking at Rick to, I know, I'm gonna ask you something, I know. You'll get the email probably about 11:30 tonight, so just go ahead and do it right now. But if we can take a look at some of those types of options. We, we're gonna be thinking way outside of the collective box on this one.
Yeah, and, and that's, the intention of the motion is for us to take a look at, during this two-year period, when, when we are not in a regional model, how, how can we better serve those students that are outside of the areas where they are, that may be in the north, or in Sparks, or out in the Spanish Springs area? If they're, because the, the transportation issue is, is the, the, the most difficult thing in terms of stand put for two years. And let's look at options. And maybe there's another thing we can do. But if there is, you know, and I believe in you, Rick. And if there is, we certainly want to be able to consider them as we look at other budget considerations. That's the intention.
So motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay. So we have six in favor, one opposed, and the motion passes. Thank you. And thank you all, parents and teachers and staff and principals for, this is one of the longer meetings we've had in a long time, and I appreciate you hanging in there till the bitter end, so. Okay, so we do have a few more items to finish up. If you could move your conversations out into the hallway, sorry, and we'll try to get everybody out of here. All right, so we're moving on to our board reports, agenda item 6.01. Would anyone like to make a board report this evening? No? All right, interim superintendent McNeil, would you like to make? Okay, moving on to our closing items, 7.01, any future agenda item requests? Yes, trustee Cotto.
As a board and board policy, I would like us to review all 9,000 board policies that have to do with the superintendent, so that we can put any changes we want in place prior, as best we can, prior to a new superintendent starting.
Thank you. Any other requests?
I do.
Trustee Minetto.
I'd like to learn more about the Naviance. Naviance, they were talking about up at Incline. We could have some kind of presentation about that, if it's coming.
Thank you. Someone will be in touch with you. Any further agenda item requests? Okay, any public comment? Everybody got their say?
I think she left, but Tiana Taylor?
Taylor, she's my cousin. She's on.
All right.
Okay, so then I will announce that the next meeting is Tuesday, February 11th in this room at 4:00 PM, and I will adjourn the meeting.